Good evening and welcome to a regular meeting of the Oak Harbor City Council. It is May 1st, 6:00 PM. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Tonight, I'd like to invite you to stand and join us in an invocation and pledge. I will lead the pledge after the invocation, which is being led tonight by Pastor Matt Waite of the First Reform Church.
Good evening. I invite you to bow your heads and pray with me. Heavenly Father, first let me say thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here today. Thank you for your many and abundant blessings. Thank you for life itself, for the measure of health we need to fulfill our callings for sustenance and for friendship. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. Thank you for loving us from your boundless and gracious nature. In the Scriptures, you have said that citizens ought to obey the governing authorities since you have established those very authorities to promote peace and order and justice. Therefore, I pray for our mayor, for the various levels of city officials, and in particular, for this assembled council. I'm asking that you would graciously grant them wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times, a sense of the welfare and true needs of our people, a keen thirst for justice and rightness, confidence in what is good and fitting, the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement, personal peace in their lives and joy in their task. I pray for the agenda set before them today. Please give an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved city of Oak Harbor. It is in your most blessed name I pray. Amen.
Thank you Pastor Waite. Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before we get to the agenda, I think I would entertain a motion to excuse Counselor Erica Wassinger. Yes, Mayor Protim?
Who do we excuse? Councilman Erica Wassinger tonight?
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion, and second motion by Mayor Protim, and second by Counselor Servadius to excuse Erica Wassinger from tonight's meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, passes unanimously. Let's talk about the agenda. I think we might have one change. Yes, Counselor Omburg?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to reverse items 8B and C. So 8B becomes C, and B becomes...
C becomes B.
And excuse me, and C becomes B. There you go.
Second?
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to reverse items number 8B and C. Any question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, passes unanimously. Any other changes? Okay, then the agenda will be approved as amended. So, we will move on to item number two, and we have a couple of honors and recognations tonight. Item number two, B, first off, is oath of office for Police Officer Christopher Hutchinson. NIC Chief Dresker coming to the podium.
Hi Mayor, council members. Thank you. I'll call Chris Ford and say a couple of things about him. I hope I don't get anything wrong. I was gonna brag about his school, so I wanna make sure it's the correct one. So, in law enforcement, we do a very detailed and thorough process in hiring police officers. We're not unique in the state. Everybody does, or hopefully does. Once officers are hired in the state, they go through our basic police academy. We also have what we call a lateral process. A lateral process can be hiring somebody who has not, who's already been through the academy, whether it's in the state or outside the state. So, Chris comes to us from San Francisco Police Department. So, going back a little bit, Chris, I believe, grew up and graduated from Coopville High School, so he's a local. And then he went on to Washington State University, go Coos, and received his degree. And then he went down to San Francisco Police Department, went through a pretty rigorous training academy down there. It's a little longer than ours. And I think it was three years about down there. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And his parents, I believe, still live in Coopville. And I'll let him introduce them shortly. And Chris applied for us, went through a testing process and everything for us, and we were very excited to have him onboard. He started on yesterday. And a quick story. So, coincidentally, we had some shift training yesterday for officers. So, we did, we'll do that twice this month, and the administration cooked him hamburgers and a barbecue for that. And then, Chris' first day, so he thinks that we do that every day for him, and we're setting him straight on that. We don't. So, we're, I'm proud to swear Chris in. I think I'll go ahead and do that first, and then, once we go through the oath of office, then he's gonna introduce his family and have one of his family members actually pin on his Oak Harbor badge for him. Okay, so... So, I'll go through this slowly. So, you repeat after me, so, aye and state your name.
Aye, Chris Hutchinson.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I am a citizen of the United States and the State of Washington.
That I am a citizen of the United States and the State of Washington.
And that I will support the Constitution?
That I will support the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States?
And the laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Washington?
The Constitution and laws of the State of Washington.
And the ordinances of the City of Oak Harbor?
And the ordinances of the City of Oak Harbor.
And that I will, to the best of my judgment?
And that I will, to the best of my judgment?
Skill and ability?
Skill and ability.
Truly and faithfully?
Truly and faithfully.
Diligently and impartially?
Diligently and impartially.
Perform the duties of police officer?
Perform the duties of police officer.
For the Oak Harbor Police Department?
For the Oak Harbor Police Department.
And the City of Oak Harbor, Washington?
And the City of Oak Harbor, Washington.
As such duties are prescribed by law and ordinance?
As such duties are prescribed by law and ordinance.
And I further swear?
And I further swear.
That I shall diligently and faithfully?
That I shall diligently and faithfully.
Carry out the lawful directives?
Carry out the lawful directives.
Of the duly constituted authorities?
Of the duly constituted authorities.
For the City of Oak Harbor?
For the City of Oak Harbor.
And that I shall abide by?
That I shall abide by.
Conduct rules of law enforcement?
Conduct rules of law enforcement.
Code of ethics?
Code of ethics.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Good job, Chris.
Thank you, sir.
So, I'm gonna let Chris introduce his family, and then he'll let you know who's gonna pin on his badge, and we'll call him or both of them up and let him do that. So, Chris?
With me today is my parents, my mom, Alana Hutchinson, my dad, Steve Hutchinson. They're both prominent members of the community, been here for a while. My father actually is gonna come up and pin my badge on.
Mom, you can, you can come out here. You don't have to stay here.
All right, this is my chance here.
Gently.
Boy, that's a blast.
It's like Kevlar.
Yeah.
Okay, and I'd also like to thank, actually, they're gonna be sticking around a little bit, but the other members of the department for coming out here and watching this. We also have a couple of Schlenk, or a couple of Island County deputies here. Sorry about that. And some volunteers from the police department and a whole host of others, a couple of cab members here. Appreciate everybody coming out for this. That's it for Chris. Now, we move on to our next one.
Okay.
How do you guys wanna handle that, Mayor?
Well, why don't you go ahead and do this one, and then I think we'll take a little break and congratulate him.
Sounds good.
So, Jen, you want four?
So, next one. We got you all night. We're here till nine o'clock, by the way, so. So, next one happens to be, at this particular point in time, is Jen Gravel, who's gonna be supervising Chris for a little bit as he's going through an FTO process. And I forgot to mention for Chris, so when he's hired, he's already got a lot of experience as a police officer, so he goes through what's called a two-week equivalency academy at the Basic Training Commission. He got done with that last Friday. So, and heard nothing but good things about that, so. So, now we have Jen Gravel, and Jen has been with the department, is it ten years? Ten years. And Jen is one of, on a patrol shift, and she is the second person I've gotten to promote for sergeant, which is a big deal for a police department. First-line supervisors are a key, key element to a police department in how progressive it is, and working that position that works with the officers and the administration and the city, and they're out there every day with the troops. So, it's a very key position, and of course, Tony Sloach and Jen were both on our list this year for promotional lists, and very, very happy to be able to move Jen to a sergeant position. She's been an acting sergeant for three months? Three months. We actually had it for a four-month period where we could, we'd have her as an acting sergeant, but we've been very pleased with her performance and what she's been doing, and there was no need to wait that additional month. So, we're just said, "Let's move forward." And so, we're happy to promote her at this point in time, which is what we're doing. We have every confidence in her and in that position. There's challenges ahead from anybody that takes that position. I think for a lot of people, they'll tell you that that was, at least people in my position, that was one rewarding position, but it was also very challenging. It's very, it's very difficult, but it's also very rewarding. So, we expect great things from Jen as she moves forward. So, I'm gonna do, swear her into, and then I'll let her introduce her, I think her father is here, and do the badge pinning on him, on her. Okay, do this again. So, I state your name?
Aye, Jen Gravel.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I am a citizen of the United States and of the State of Washington?
That I am a citizen of the United States and the State of Washington.
And that I will support the Constitution and the laws of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution and the laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Washington?
The Constitution and the laws of the State of Washington.
And the ordinances of the City of Oak Harbor?
And the ordinances of the City of Oak Harbor.
And that I will?
And that I will.
To the best of my judgment?
To the best of my judgment.
Skill and ability?
Skill and ability.
Truly and faithfully?
Truly and faithfully.
Diligently and impartially?
Diligently and impartially.
Perform the duties of sergeant?
Perform the duties of sergeant.
For the Oak Harbor Police Department?
For the Oak Harbor Police Department.
And the City of Oak Harbor, Washington?
And the City of Oak Harbor, Washington.
As such duties are prescribed by law and ordinance?
As such duties are prescribed by law and ordinance.
And I further swear?
And I further swear.
That I shall diligently and faithfully?
That I shall diligently and faithfully.
Carry out the lawful directives?
Carry out the lawful directives.
Of the duly constituted authorities?
Of the duly constituted authorities.
For the City of Oak Harbor?
For the City of Oak Harbor.
And that I shall abide by?
And that I shall abide by.
Conduct rules of law enforcement code of ethics?
Conduct rules of law enforcement code of ethics.
Perfect. So help me God.
So help me God.
And I forgot to mention that Jen graduated from Auburn University, I believe it was in English. Was that your degree? And so, every time I miss a comma or punctuation, I'm, I gotta watch out. She does a very good job of correcting that stuff. So, Jen, I'll let you introduce your father.
So, pinning my badge on tonight is gonna be my father, Ed Meyer.
And we also have a plaque for Jen. So, we're at the back door, no. So, we have a plaque for Jen for her wall, and it's a promotional certificate, certification. Just says, "By the power vested in me and in recognition of your trust, loyalty, and professional service to the department and to the citizens of the City of Oak Harbor, I hereby promote Jen Gravel to Sergeant," and it's signed today's date.
Thank you. I didn't really prepare anything to say. I just wanted to say, I guess, thank you to my department and all the people who've supported me through this process, especially my squad that had to deal with me when I was an acting sergeant, trying to learn what I was supposed to do in order to make a successful transition into an actual sergeant. So, thanks, guys.
So, we can take a break before, I think my next thing is, oh, we got the cab board and the presentation, so if you guys wanna take a break?
Yeah, let's take a five-minute break. We'll reconvene at 6:20. Okay, good evening. I'd like to reconvene this regular meeting of the Oak Harbor City Council. Hello? Hello out there. Okay, it is, it is May 1st. We are reconvening the meeting at this time.
There's two wives out there, one drunk here and one at the chair.
Yeah, I know, I know. We are on, we just finished our item number 2B, honors and recognations, and again, congratulations to our Police Officer Christopher Hutchinson and our new Sergeant Jen Gravel. And at this time, we'll move on to item number 2C, community presentations, and we have Chief Dresker for the 2017 Annual Police Department Report. Chief?
Thank you again. I'll say word disrupt a bunch, that much is sure. Okay, so, what, you all have the 2017 report in front of you, physical copies. I know it was in your agenda package too. And just gonna go through it. I'm not gonna go through that document per se. I'm gonna kinda highlight it in this PowerPoint. So, what I bring your attention to now is the photograph that you see up there, which is of all of the staff, and I don't remember exactly what, what the date was this was taken, but it was last year. And I put first department photograph, 'cause at least to the memory that anybody has, that's the first one where the entire department has been together and had a photograph taken. To me, that's an important thing. It's a, it speaks to all different things, from team building to unity to just, just a lot of different factors. So, hopefully, that'll be something in the future. But that's our team, and as I go through this, this is our organizational chart, which shows how our department is divided into, into its organizational structure. And we made a change in, in January, February, to a two-captain structure. In 2017, we were still at a one-captain structure. This is showing the two captains in there, just so you see what we're at now. It was made right at the end, the end of the last And flip into this, just shows some of our beautiful area here and some demographics for you. Most of you know all of this, but you can see the growth. Not a tremendous difference between 2015 to 2017 on some of those figures. Military personnel, you'll see that that took a jump, at least for the statistics that we could find. Visitors, I thought that was kind of an amazing little piece there for the tourist industry. So, the Oak Harbor Police Department, 2017, of course, was my, my first full year here, and we did a restructuring in 2017. At the end of 2017, we looked at it, took place in 2018. We're now broken down into what we call Operations Bureau and Administrative Bureau. This structure is gonna lead us to the future. And it also allowed us to, like the promotion you just saw was part of, part of that, which allows some growth and expansion within a department and some succession planning, which is something we need to, we need to focus on. So, people, I'm gonna talk about it. I talked about it in my chief's notes on there, and I just wanna emphasize that a little bit. You know, police chiefs serve a certain period of time within an organization. A lot of times, those people that are working at the line level or supervisor level, they're there for 30 years, or whatever time they spend there. And you may or may not have leadership in that position, but those people are the, are the ones who make that department. So, for me, as I look at the staff that just left here and the staff that I came and worked with, as I, as I came to this department, even through thick and thin, even through some troubled times, they were very dedicated to the community. They, they knew what the job was that they had to do, and they, they are what makes the Oak Harbor Police Department, in my opinion, a great department. So, last year, we were able to recognize quite a number of officers during a couple, during a couple of award ceremonies, which was fantastic. We have 26 police officers, and that's commissioned police officers, authorized strength for our department. We operated a little short last year, or last year because of our attempts to hire and making sure we go through the process. We have seven correctional officers. Of course, we have a city jail. And we have six support staff, including records. Meg Matthews, the administrative assistant. And then, of course, we had an animal control officer, which retired just last month, Terry Sampson, who you all know. We, part of our push last year was to collaborate with our area partners as much as we can and improve and increase that. We reached out and started, we put a, had one of our detectives as part of an FBI task force for human trafficking. And so, that detective goes to a meeting once a month, and they work a lot of different human trafficking emphasis. And so, that's, we, we get the experience, we get the knowledge from that task force and the ability to call on them and also provide some support. We also reached out to the Skagit County SMART Team, which investigates, like, police officer involved shootings. Of course, we called on them last year when we had that incident. And Island County and us are joining that team. So, we have that independent review process for those types of incidents. We also reached out to the county, Island County Sheriff's Office. We did some training with them last year, including Emergency Vehicle Operations Course. And our officers and their officers both went through the same course with shared instructors. So, it's important to us to reach out and try to do what we can to collaborate for efficiency and, and to interact with other agencies. Our desks in our squad room were, you know, frankly terrible, broken. We went in and purchased some new desks and redid the environment, let the officers work on that. They did painting. They basically got the squad room, which is where they do reports and stuff, looking the way it does by them doing the work. And it's important for, you know, having a good work environment. And it also shows, you know, we do, we do wanna support, and we do care for what you do. We've also done work in other areas of the department. We put up photographs on a lot of the walls of the officers in action and communicate, and them interacting with, with the community. We purchased a thing on the top left, you'll see there, as a drying locker for evidence. That was noted, and we had a capital budget thing put in there before I got here for that. And we just made a lot of other improvements. We transitioned our pistols, some of them 15 years old, and purchased some new equipment for the range, and evidence room, and just tried to do what we could with the budget that we had to improve our equipment and everything we could for the officers in the department. Another big thing that we push for, and we're still pushing for, is community outreach. So, non, non-enforcement-related contacts with the community. We've gone out to Harbor Towers and a lot of other places. We've had lunch. I think you see one there on the top right. A couple of these from this year, but the same type of stuff we did last year. We sit and had lunch with the folks there. They loved it. I think I still have a six-pack of soda in my office that they sent. Haven't drank. We've also had tours of the police department. There's a couple there with kids and some Japanese exchange students. That actually happened this year. You see one there with Officer Gravel, now Sergeant Gravel, having, sitting down, talking with some students from a class or a club. So, different events like that, we're pushing that out as part of what we call a five-plus-two program, which is just getting our officers to interact and to have a lot of positive community contacts with the schools, with organizations, walking downtown, walking into parks, within, within the ability that we have with staffing and call loads and all that. It's, it's what we call discretionary time, and we're, we're pushing that. And they've bought into it very nicely. Some statistics here, just threw in. I won't go over them all, but our call, our call load, calls for service, which is people calling up, say, "I need an officer for this or that," went down slightly. which is people calling up, saying, "I need an officer for this or that," went down slightly. Our misdemeanor arrests went down slightly, gross misdemeanor went up. Felonies went down a little bit. Our burglaries. I think car prowls is the only criminal crime element that went up in calls. We had more car prowls last year than we had in the past. And that's all in your packet. Record statistics, we gotta remember that all of our patrol officers out there generate reports and generate paperwork. And all of those reports, paperwork, citations, documents, everything have to be filed, kept, sorted. You know, we got CPL licenses, gun licenses, all that. Our record staff works hard to do that. So these are some of the numbers of the stuff that they process. And sometimes they're kinda not recognized for what they do, but we couldn't, we as in police officers, commissioned police officers, couldn't do what we do without them doing what they do. So it takes a true team unity and team effort. Inmate status, just some statistics on our people that went through our jail. It's again down from the previous two years. And then I just wanna point out some of the awards we gave out last year. The ones on the left are from the incident that happened at Howard and Mallie Park. Truly, truly professional work, in my opinion, and true teamwork with that. And again, it wasn't just us. They're not up there, but Island County Sheriff's Office was right there for us, as was the Skagit County Smart Team when we called them up. And not only that, Public Works was there. You know, our records people were there. Chaplain Lawler was there. Just, you know, everybody pitching in. On the right are just some individual awards for life-saving, certificate of commendation, and a letter of recognition. I won't go through all that again. I think you've seen that. But it's truly an honor to recognize people with that. And I think, just like the promotional ceremony tonight and the swearing-in, all of that is valuing our employees. And that's what it is, you know, I could do what I do, and it wouldn't matter if we didn't have the staff that was willing to do what they do in a professional manner. And you could pass that around now. Sorry. I haven't passed it around. We revisited our department vision this year, and we asked for officers to give input as we did that. So we have our mission statement, dedicated to community safety and service, and we have our vision or our values there, sorry. And, you know, these are things that we've made these up. We posted them all around the department. And we put a TV up in the hallway along with the photographs, and we rotate things through there. Just part of the whole scheme of building that esprit de corps and pride in what we do. But the officers here do a fantastic job and are very open to all these changes. Some of the community focus, senior center visits, department tours, school visits. We've been very active in trying to get out to the schools. Cops in a crosswalk is something one of our officers came up with, and some of the activity that takes place with that. Police on a playground, the same thing. What you see there in the photograph on the right is actually shop with a hero. Fire Department does that too. We were there with the Fire Department and with certain kids selected out of the community for the need. We went with them and paired up with them. I actually stood around all the time. I didn't get paired up with someone, because they were already all paired up. But the rest of them did. So they went around and shopped to a certain dollar value for some gifts for themselves and family members. So, and I'll read this. "The Oak Harbor Police Department and the City of Oak Harbor work hard to provide a safe and welcoming community environment. We here at the Oak Harbor Police Department believe in our mission statement, dedicated to community safety and service." We didn't change that. That's a good mission statement. We left that alone. "We work as professionals to do all we can to support that statement. The City of Oak Harbor was recognized by a couple of organizations as one of the safest cities in Washington in 2017. While many factors lead to reduced crime, we work hard to be one of those factors." And these are based on what's called NiBRA statistics, which is crime data. And that'll fluctuate. Some years will be higher, some will be lower. But just to be at that level, again, shows a lot, and I think I spoke to it at another meeting I had. It's not just as the police department, it's Public Works, it's the city, it's council, it's everybody that works. It's also the community. I think the community here, based on our demographics, show a lot of responsibility and want things done right. So we're proud in our department, and the officers who have worked there a lot longer than I have have been doing a great job at it, and we're proud to be part of that. So that's my presentation, and if you guys have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Counsel, anything? Yes, Mayor Protius.
It's not a question, but a comment, Chief. It is fabulous to see your officers out in the community and participating. It used to be, I think they just went to work and kinda went home, and you didn't see them unless you knew them. They were your neighbors or something. But I think it means the world to the community as a whole to know that they are part of us. They're not just here. They're part of us, and we live and work together. And please pass it on. It is just wonderful that they're willing to give, and you're encouraging. So thank you very much.
Thank you, and that's good to hear. And just an extra piece on that too is, you know, Mike Bailey, Captain Mike Bailey is here. And he and Daniel Arnett, who's one of our jail correction staff, both did the Big Brother, Big Sister, the Bigs with badges this year. And just fantastic at that. The kids love it, their parents love it, the people who are organizing love it, and it's just big kudos to them for that. And just part of the outreach of just getting involved, not only in our community, but surrounding communities and good causes. You know, we haven't participated in this department in the Special Olympics torch run. I did it last year and ended up walking a portion of it. I'm embarrassed to say, but irregardless, we'll move past that. I've got four officers this year that are out there gonna run it now. And that's May 30th, and they're going over to I-5 Quarter to run it. They have never done that before, so I've got four of them who volunteered to do that on their own time. So it's just that kind of commitment for these causes in the community that I think is the extra special thing they do in addition to the daily dangerous work they do.
Yes, Counsel Weisner.
I have a comment too, Chief. I wanted to commend you for taking the time to recognize those officers, do the awards. Do the oath of office here. I actually look forward to each time I see on the agenda. The lengthy oath, happy I'm not having to do that. But, you know, every time we see a large contingent of officers here supporting the folks. And there was a time, you know, I can think back to when the department wasn't quite so united. And I wanted to commend you for coming in and taking the steps and measures to bring the department back together. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief.
Okay, Mike's here for the next presentation.
Yes, Captain Bailey.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council members and mayor. I get the distinct privilege to give you the 2017 Community Advisory Board Report. It's brief, so if I can first have some of our CAB members from 2017 join me up here. Marty and Cheryl Lawler and Jean. So the Oak Harbor Police Department Community Advisory Board is set up with nine CAB members. Those members, there's one non-city of Oak Harbor resident. There's two city of Oak Harbor business managers and five Oak Harbor residents. And we have one student, Oak Harbor High School student, which gives us kind of a variety of different input when we meet quarterly. Last year in 2017, Marty Malloy, who is here, was our chair. Jean Barner is here as well, was the business manager for our CAB board. Jeff Campbell, he was from January through March with the CAB board. Nora Daniel, she is also a resident with Oak Harbor. Randy DeVries, it was, started in August and went through till December 2017. Susan Gerard, Sarah Hackley, who recently has moved away and is no longer for 2018 on the board. Cheryl Lawler, which is here. Bob Olson and Joseph, I might miss, Buzzick, I think it is? Busick is his name. The members of the CAB provide a valuable service by providing information and understanding for both the police department and the community. They provide insight as the department consistently works to strengthen community ties and participation to work together on activities which affect the quality of life in Oak Harbor. The community, Oak Harbor Police Department Community Advisory Board was established by ordinance 897 on September 17th, 1991. It enhances police-community relations. It apprises the mayor, city council, and chief of police of the community's needs for police services. Hold public meetings to solicit public input. There are no authority over personnel or police-related incidences. The CAB has worked with the department this past year, informing us of issues mainly focused on transient problems, homeless camps, mental health resources, drug problems, and also impact on local businesses. Department is working hard to keep the CAB informed of the challenges the department is facing, whether it might be staffing shortages or just educating police officers within our department on biased policing. Department has worked hard to keep the CAB informed of the improvements and goals of the department. Is working on the Loan Executive Management Assistant Program, which is abbreviated as LEMAP, which is basically an assessment. Some outside chiefs, captains come in and give us a overall assessment of the department and how we're doing. And also the five-plus-two program is what the chief instilled within the department about getting out into the community more and doing more community events. The CAB also assists with several community events. They can be found at parades, National Night Out. They are there to help us and to interact with the community and provide valuable feedback to the department. That's one of several pictures of last year's National Night Out. We, the CAB board meets quarterly. Meetings are posted on the website. And they're at 4:15 PM at the Oak Harbor PD Training Room. Lastly, I'd like to take a moment to recognize and thank the CAB members for the devotion that they put in and the time that they do to discuss as a board and with me and also other police personnel on how we can serve the community better and what things they can do. They devote a lot of time. They take out of their busy schedules often to help us with, like I said, National Night Out and parades and stuff like that. So I'd like to give them a thanks, and if we could, give them a round of applause. Any questions?
Counsel? Yes, Counsel Reisen.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm looking at your faces, and I think that most of you have been on the CAB either since its inception or for quite a while. I mean, like, years. How long have you been on the CAB? Over a year. I know that Joseph Busick is only over a year. Marty, you've been on it for? Two and a half years?
Five or six.
Five or six years.
Five or six for Jean.
That's awesome. Thank you so much for your time. I really appreciate it.
Anyone else? Well, we thank you for your generous donation of your time and your energy and your experience, so we appreciate it. Thank you.
I can do some more if you want, but I think that's it for us.
Thanks, Chief. Okay, we will move on to item number three on our agenda, citizen comment period. Citizens may comment on subjects of interest not listed on the agenda or items listed on the consent agenda. To ensure comments are recorded properly, please state your name clearly into the microphone. And please limit your comments to three minutes to ensure all citizens have sufficient time to speak. So we are open for citizen comments at this time. Okay, not seeing any. We will move on to our consent agenda. Looks like we have items A through D to be considered on our consent agenda. Anybody, any questions or input? Okay, seeing none, we will, it will be approved as presented. I have a few comments here tonight. I have, first off, a plaque that was presented, actually, to one of our city councillors. Counselor Larson, I think, was in attendance, and I'm not even sure what the event was. Bill?
It was a Haven Volunteer Appreciation Awards luncheon.
Wonderful, okay. And at that time, they presented to the City of Oak Harbor "From the Widbe Homeless Coalition, with gratitude for giving heart to the Haven." And this was given to us, so. Thank you, Bill, for bringing that back and pass it around. Also wanna bring your attention to the artwork that is behind us here. This is new, and this is artwork by Beth Bridgers Johns. Beth grew up in the Maryland suburb of Washington DC. Earned a degree in studio art from Duke University, where she focused on printmaking, oil painting, and photography. She later obtained a master's degree in architecture and worked in the field while raising two children in Bozeman, Montana. In 2013, Beth and her husband Fird retired to Oak Harbor on Widbe Island, where they both are pursuing, sharing their respective passions, photography and boating. Beth finds inspiration on this beautiful island, its waters, and the surrounding mountains. She believes the artistic process is important for human well-being and enjoys sharing her artistic vision with others through her photographs. Beth's photographic technique is heavily influenced by the environment of the Pacific Northwest. The themes of moody gray skies and fog, reflections on water, and the surprise of crisp, clean sunlight thread through her work. Her interests and subject matter vary widely. This selection of her work reveals her fascination with light and mood through landscapes. She enhances the quality of form, color, and light in her photography, because it was these aspects of nature that evoked her earliest sense of wonder with the world. Beth states, "I love the creative process when it feels as if I'm not the one in control, but I am being directed by something beyond myself. I believe this is the essence of inspiration and is why I love doing photography. My hope is that what is motivated by my own surprise, wonder, and awe will elicit some of the same emotions in those who view my work." So thank you, Beth, for sharing your work with us here. Also, this past weekend, I think some of you, I know some of you enjoyed the Holland Happening Festival, even though we got a little rain. It was a success, I am told. And I can't tell the people involved enough, the sponsors, especially our wonderful Oak Harbor Chamber of Commerce, for all of the work they do to put that event on. So thank you to all in the community and especially to those in the Chamber of Commerce. Thank you very much for a great Holland Happening. And with that, I'll turn it over to Counsel. Counsel comments? Yes, Counselor Cervantes.
Thank you. I probably should've said this earlier while we had the members of our police department here. I had the opportunity to go out this morning, and I'd asked the chief, somehow it had come up in a conversation about looking at some of these, I guess, trouble spots, encampment spots, where we have, whether it's homeless or transient folks that come through the community. And I'd gotten different calls from private property owners that are really struggling with this. Counsel member, Bones, you mentioned this also at our workshop. So I wanted to thank the police department very much. Had Captain Bailey, Sergeant Gravel, our new police officer, Chris Hutchinson, out there, and one other person, I think I'm forgetting. Oh, Chief Dresker, that's probably it. Oh, no, Manny Silver. And you go in, yes, we went into the woods and a couple of different areas up behind Walmart there on the Friend property. And you know it's gonna probably be rough, but when you get in there and you realize the amount of stuff that's in there, it's truly a problem. And so, you know, I know Counsel Member, Bones, you brought it up, and I really wanna see if we can put some energy in trying to help, obviously help those people that need help and want help. There's some folks, I think unfortunately, that don't want help, and they're okay with that lifestyle. And, you know, but I don't think it's okay for the rights of the private property owners to be infringed upon, and they're stuck with an intense cleanup situation. And so I have some pictures. I didn't think about it in time to have Tim put them up, but I think it would be fairly educational and even for any of my peers to possibly take one of those field trips. And then maybe we could put our heads together and try and come up with some solutions that once again can get the folks that need help, help. The folks that don't want help or they choose to purposely break the law. As for me, I want to make sure that it's not comfortable for them here, that they could probably find somewhere else to do that. But like I said, get the folks help that need help. And just once again, thank the police department. When you, it was a sunny day to go out there with four officers, but to think that they go out there at times at night in the dark, it just really made me appreciate what they go through on a daily basis. And at a time, sometimes when the, I think there's an era where certain bad apples will pop up in the media as far as police efforts. I think we've got a truly valuable police force and we don't probably give them enough credit for what they really do on a daily basis, so thank you.
Great, well said. Anyone else? Yes, Counsel Heisen.
Well, we're on the subject of the police. It'll be all about the police department. Today, I've got two things. Saturday, during Holland Happening, I spent the day at the police department. It was National Drug Takeback Day and a day for people to go and securely dispose of all of their unused, expired, unwanted medications versus flushing down the toilet, which I know, you know, Brett's over there nodding, we don't want that to happen. And it was, it was a really good day. People, you know, brought in their products to be securely disposed of and the Youth Coalition gave out locking prescription pouches so that people could securely store their meds and make sure kids and other people didn't get into them. And Captain Bailey sat there with me all day and it was, it was a really good day and we had, we had some good talks and it was really nice to get some insight into the department. And we had a good chat about, about community involvement, you know, being out and about in the community and, you know, you mentioned the same thing, that, you know, when we see members of our police department out there just being people, it, it really does, it fosters a sense of community in, in a way that no other outreach, I think, can do. So, they are appreciated. And I also wanted to formally and publicly thank Officer Nathan Patterday. I don't, some of you may or may not know, but his last day with the Oak Harbor Police Department is a week from today. It's the eighth and he's our school resource officer. So, he and his wife are moving back to Eastern Washington where they came from. And she's a 911 dispatcher and he's our school resource officer. And Officer Patterday has also spent about three years on the Youth Coalition and a really active and engaged member of the Youth Coalition, not just there because the chief told him to be there. You know, so their contribution to the community has been significant. They will be missed and that's going to be, he's going to leave a big hole in the, in the community. It's going to be tough to fill in terms of the effect that the, that he's had. The school board loves him, the students love him, the administration loves him. It's been a really good addition to our community, so as sorry as I am to see him go, I wish he and his wife, you know, luck and good fortune and happiness on all of their future endeavors. And on behalf of, I don't want to speak for all of us, but on behalf of myself and the Oak Harbor Youth Coalition and Island County Human Services, we wanted to thank you publicly for all of your contributions to our community, Officer Nathan Patterday. Thank you.
Well said. Yes, Mayor Broten.
Thank you. I want to give my congratulations to the VAS committee for Holland Happening and our brave citizens who came out and chaired us on in the wet, their ponchos. And it was a fabulous event. The new, what do you call it, arcade rides were festive and looked so nice and it seemed like people were enjoying that, so that was great. And our town crier, the tradition of the Dutch ringing the bell and starting the parade, it was really nice that even as large as our city may grow, we still have certain traditions back to the roots of how this town was formed. The other thing I want to say thank you to is the Oak Harbor Yacht Club for the opening day of boating and yachting, but it also celebrates our legacy, our harbor where the town was built. And there were 17 boats in a parade, most of sailboats, a few power boats, but they were, with their flags and they went around and around so the city could see and enjoy. But it was nice, too, that we also keep another tradition in this break, so.
When was this?
Sunday.
I was wondering what that was all about.
Yeah, yeah, the Fest of Boats, yes, yes. So anyway, it's nice that we have different groups that will help keep traditions going on for our cities, so thank you very much to both.
Thank you, Mayor Broten. Anyone else? Okay, we will move on to the City Administrator Comments. Interim City Administrator?
So I have Brett available to do the Clean Water Facility update for you.
As I say, this is our time for our Clean Water Facility project update. Many times in the last three years, I've shown you pictures of big trains lifting things and here's another one. I hope you never get tired of them because pretty soon they're going to be gone, but this is actually our new standby generator for the treatment plant that came in. It's kind of interesting story with the Sharps Crossing stuff. This is a wide load, special load had to come in and Sharps Crossing closed for wide loads as of Friday, so we actually brought this thing on Thursday and started at the old RV park. So it was kind of interesting that all of a sudden this truck showed up and the guys actually got up and ran it early. So, this is two megawatts. That big flat thing underneath it is actually the fuel tank. We store enough fuel to run that thing, so it's a big motor, it's a big diesel engine. This is what it looks like when it's done. It's actually in a custom enclosure. This is actually built by Cummins and it's designed to be quiet and it's got its proper environment and everything like that. And that brown color looks kind of strange from this angle, but if you look at it from the other side, it actually matches the building quite nicely. I was actually pretty impressed by that, you know. Not being a color fanatic, it was, it was pretty, pretty fun. Recent activities, we are starting GMP number 13 Windjammer Park. You did approve it on April 17th and we are getting started with it. Quite a bit of work right now in just terms of getting contracts let, submittals approved. We have sent out a citywide mailer. You all received a copy of that postcard, so that's hit everybody's mailbox probably today. So that is out. We are, we have posted signs down by the waterfront. If they earn up today, they'll be up first thing in the morning. Our SCADA software is progressing. We actually had a big meeting with the operators last week. That's going to be an interesting process. They're actually feeling pretty comfortable with it. Operator training is ongoing. That's going to be a bigger activity in the next couple of months. We are finishing up our development permits for the park project in anticipation of starting. Excuse us a second. Construction-wise, we're continuing backfill around structures. That's going to be actually getting pretty started. There actually is a big D8 on top of our pile there to start pushing dirt around. That's going to be one of our earlier activities. We have to do some site clearing and some archaeological exploration before we really get going. GMPs number nine and number 11 are quite active. We've been steady at 115 workers on site. Our self-performed work on the wood framing is complete and that building is looking quite nice. Masonry work, I said continued, but we're actually finishing that up. The last wall is being washed right now. They're dismantling equipment. We have a couple of small block sections to put in, but the mason is coming off the job, which is nice. As I said earlier, we are starting GMP number 13 tasks and that will be an ongoing activity here. Right now, we are anticipating moving the fence out and closing the park the week of May 14th, so if anybody wants, we'll have the fence back, but any reservations, it's going to be by chance after Monday that day. Brian's here, but whenever we get the fence in the right time, we'll move it and we don't want to close the fence until we can show a lot of activity, so, but that's our, that's our schedule at this point. Budget-wise, these are the same numbers I showed at the last meeting. They are not updated as with GMP number 13, so these are kind of obsolete, so I'm not going to read them off. And they are through the 31st. Again, this, this chart will change next time. We don't have any major updates or decision points. I do want to mention to the council that we do the monthly report on the second meeting of the month. During June and July, you're not going to have that meeting, so we'll do it at the first meeting, but we don't get the information until close out, so it's going to be a little bit out of sync to our normal process. It'll be two weeks delayed and we'll go back to our regular schedule in August, but we will be having that reported. It's just going to be, you'll see it at the first of the month in those times. Schedule-wise, moving right ahead, stay on schedule. That's a big, a lot of pieces coming together right now. It's pretty exciting. You've seen this before, but this month, we're completing major structural construction, I should say last month now, and we're pretty much on that. Walls and roofs are complete. Our liquid process startup is mechanical electrical, is starting up in July this year with the clean water testing, very much so. Right now, the driver on that is our MCCs and we heard today that they're on their way, so that's, that's good news for us. August, we'll start the solids processing, mechanical electrical parts. We'll start treating sewage in September and then November, we hope to have everything up and operational. Like I said earlier, we'll close the park on May 14th and basically from May to December, the park will be closed. We'll be doing site improvements and park improvements during that period of time. If you want to learn more about our project, you can reach our website at www.okeharborcleanwater.org. You can call our project line at 914-7000 or call our work extensions. You can email us at treatmentplant@okeharbor.org. And we still have our, every other Mondays, I haven't had anybody show up for quite a while, but we have our next one on May 14th. Questions?
Counsel? Mayor Broten?
Thank you, Mayor. How many people do we have training on that SCADA software?
Right now, we have, we just lost an operator on Friday, so right now, we have five people training on it.
So will it stay around six or may it bump up to?
We need, we need to have six to run this, so we're going to have to get another. I think we had two positions that we needed to fill. And our training is kind of neat because we do have a small, so we actually get a lot of individual, we don't do classroom. They actually sit down and do tests on it, so it's kind of, but they're actually liking the system quite, quite a bit, so.
And then another question, I know that we only have one official council meeting on, in June and July, but we do have a workshop. It seems awfully long to get three reports in August for things. Is it possible to do a shortened one, maybe at the beginning of our workshop? I'm just throwing it out as a, you know, in June, we'll have our June official city council meeting, but we also have a workshop. I don't think that, that is canceled, is it?
No.
That maybe we could just have a short version of a report that we would maybe normally have?
Financials could be ready, but workshop if necessary.
It just seems like two months without it and then?
You wouldn't go two months without it. You'd just get, instead of getting the May report on the second meeting in, but the April report, you'll get the second meeting in May, the June report or the end of May report, instead of getting it the first meeting in June, we normally give it on the second meeting in June. I think the proposal was to move it to July, so instead of getting it the second meeting in June, you'd get it the first meeting in July, kind of. So, it wouldn't go until August before you'd see it. You'd see it at the first meeting in July, but we could do it at the workshop if that's what you would like.
I was just thinking, if we're getting close to the end and there may be a lot of stuff, it might be nice to have some information at the workshop if it, if it works out, but those are also limited with a lot of things on the calendar, so I'm just tossing it out as a suggestion. Thank you.
I'm certainly, we can figure interim report for you.
Counselor Cervantes.
Thank you. Brett, you may or may not know the answer to this, but, and I was trying to find it, but I'm not that smart. The grade, City Beach Street, just to, well, City Beach Street and the pathway along the waterfront, I thought I remember us talking about that coming up at some point. Do you know about how much?
The grade at, you know, where the, where City Beach comes up and where entrance to the new facility is going to be?
Right.
It's actually come out about three feet there.
Okay.
And that's where a lot of our fill is going and then it's going to kind of hump down and, but it's going to be fairly flat till it hits the water plane, so where the trail is right now, we're actually going to raise that up a foot or two.
And so the reason for my question is I walked down through there the other day and looking at that tribute, the founders, the base that's been put in there. It's at the grade of the current sidewalk. Did we consider bringing that up a foot?
Actually, I worked, I actually coordinated with Richard Nash on that one and we're not, we're kind of, we're not really, we're raising the grade, but the founder statue is further east in our fill areas.
Right.
So that's, right now, we don't have any long-term plans to fill out there and I tried to coordinate that with our long-term landscaping plan.
But if we anticipate raising the street and everything to the west of the street, are we not going to raise the stuff that's just east of the street eventually?
Well, it'll slope down a little bit, but it's really not coming up very far and that was a question we had at the time.
Okay.
Because remember, the ground over there is a little higher than, than over by City Beach.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Larson.
So Brett, I don't have any questions for you tonight, but I wanted to thank you for answering the myriad of questions that I threw at you during the tour you gave me last week, especially as we were 25 feet under. Being an old submariner, I had a lot of questions while we were in the belly of the beast. And I just wanted to encourage anyone who's ever thought of taking you up on one of those Monday tours to, to do so. You, you've done a great job of showing us the progress through pictures, but actually getting down there, walking in amongst, out of those 115 workers, they didn't know who we were, what we were doing, and there were no idle hands. There was, there was a lot of work being done, a lot of activity, and you see things very differently when you're in there in a three-dimensional look, so I would encourage anyone to take you up on your offer. So thanks for your, for your time and answering all my questions last week.
And we do it by appointment, too, so if somebody can't make it Monday afternoon, I'm certainly can arrange for something.
Counselor Almbrich.
Thank you, Mayor. Brett, before this council meeting this evening, you'd mentioned, I understood you to say that we received our NPDES permit. Today, it was actually issued?
Issued at four o'clock this afternoon.
Would you mind explaining what that acronym is and what the significance is relative to the wastewater treatment plant?
We're building our whole facility under the auspices of the Clean Water Act, which is federal law, is administered by the Department of Ecology. Every wastewater treatment plant in the United States is required to have an NPDS permit, which allows discharge to public waters. That permit drives our, what we discharge, how we discharge, and it's got numerical limits to what we, what we discharge. And it, it's a big deal to us because if our facility is old, if you remember back to 2010, we started this process when the DOE came back and gave us a new permit that required us to begin the facilities planning process to upgrade. To me, it's, it's a big news to us because, yeah, they've taken our new facility, not only this permit is special in the fact that we have to operate the lagoons to a point we transfer it back to Navy and we operate this new facility. So it, it's a lot of work and it's also, you know, we have liabilities under that permit for, you know, if we don't meet our requirements, it's a $10,000 a day fine. So, it is, our whole construction process is driven by these permit requirements.
And then, since you mentioned the Navy, I'm not going to ask you to go in any detail on that, but they also have to operate the lagoons under a permit after we have departed from that facility, not necessarily NPDES, but they still have to operate under a federal permit.
They operate under, what happens is, the way it was written, that's why this permit is kind of unique, most times it's not, not this complex, but we operate both facilities to a date. We have to give the DOE 60 days' notice of our leaving the facility, then the Navy takes it over. Navy then has to have their own NPDS permit in process and right now, I think they're out, they were out for public comment. I don't think it's closed yet and it is a public process that goes through, you know, and once that, they get issued a permit and they have compliance schedules on it.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you, Brett. Okay, any other comments at this time? We will move on to public hearings and meetings. To speak during a scheduled public hearing or meeting, please sign in and you'll still get a chance, even if you didn't sign in. To ensure comments are recorded properly, please state your name into the microphone and limit your comments to three minutes to ensure all citizens have sufficient time to speak. So, we will move down to item number 8A. This is a request on my part, actually, to, for a for approval of a temporary employee contract, this, this is a contract that you all should have a copy of, this is a result, really, of many conversations that I've had with either counselors or citizens, and it is, we, we have a team of people that are working on our, on the largest project that we've ever had in the city of Oak Harbor, and I believe that we, with the addition of this, Mr. Gary Golds, who happens to be with us in the audience here tonight, with the, with the addition of him on that team, I think we'll get probably a better closing, or I don't know about better, but we'll, Mr. Golds has worked on in excess of 60, around the mid-60s in major projects in his career, he lives just short ways away here in Coopville, he has most recently been involved in most every project that the school district has had, our local school district, and he comes highly recommended as a communicator, he certainly has, with his knowledge, he has experience in negotiating and closing projects, and I think he'll be a great addition to our team, so, so, yes, Counselor Servadia.
Sorry, Mayor, I should have done this earlier, because I know you'll probably get questions, but since you normally don't testify or talk to an agenda item, I would move that we suspend the council's rules to allow you to comment and answer questions with regard to this.
Sure.
Second.
Okay, you've got a motion in second to suspend the council's rules to allow me to comment on this, so motion by Counselor Servadia, second by Counselor Almberg, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so you've had a chance, hopefully, to read the contract, Mr. Golds, if this is approved, will be soon introduced to the, the rest of the team, he intends to work alongside of them and, and provide his experience and, and communication to us for any questions and things that we might have for him, so, I think I've spoken to some of you, and I'd be happy to try my best to answer the questions, Mr. Golds has offered his by being here, and if you've got questions that you might want to ask him, he's here to discuss those. So, Counselor Servadia.
One of the first questions I had, the, I mean, there's a brief discussion here as far as the employment, employment agreement, one of the numbers that caught my eye, although we talked about a 20-hour work week, there is in section three, an agreement not to exceed 867 hours.
I'll answer that.
In 2018, which equates to basically six months of work at 108,000.
That, that is actually something that Mr. Golds and I talked about adding, just for Mr. Golds' benefit, so that he can show DRS if he needs to, that he won't be working over 867 hours in a calendar year, because he's a PERS 1 retiree, and he, he's limited.
So, please don't take this the wrong way, but you said that was for Mr. Golds' benefit, I'm more concerned about what's for our benefit, help me understand, Department of Retirement Systems...
Does not allow PERS 1 retirees to work.
Wouldn't it make more sense to turn this into a 400, and that's a guarantee you can't work over 867? I, I don't mean to be flippant, but if we had it limited at 400, and we have to come back and extend it, that's the same guarantee, but I don't want to be on the hook for possibly 108,000.
So, so the agreement says that the average is going to be 20 hours per week, and that particular piece, that particular number is put in there because there's a possibility of a 90-day extension with council approval, and this number was put in there so that DRS knows that there's no way that in the 2018 calendar year, he's going to go over that, but the agreement is for an average of 20 hours per week.
Right, but it also talks about there may be more or less, so I, I don't know how I want to reconcile that one in my brain, I'll pause there at the moment, though, thank you.
Yeah, I think it's both Mr. Golds and my desire that he work in pretty much an average of 20 hours per week, not, not more, probably less, but I, I think we both want to be flexible in that if he may work, you know, 28 hours one week, and then, and then less the next week, or he may not work at all, I think he does plan to take a, a short vacation during this next six-month time period, so he may work, you know, over on the week before, and perhaps even the week after, but, but certainly, both of us intend to keep it at 20 hours average. Counselor Almberg.
My understanding is that this doesn't have to be 867, it can be less, and let's say, things are progressing positively for the city on this, at the mayor's discretion, this can be also reduced, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Heisen.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a number of concerns about this item, not, not necessarily about the position or the person, but about the agenda item and the way it's presented, and this was added to our agenda yesterday, we, the contract is sitting on our desk when we get in this evening, it was sent out later this morning, but not everybody got a chance to look at it, I'm really uncomfortable when things are rushed through like this, and I'm not sure what the emergency is, and, so I'm concerned about that, and all of that notwithstanding, even with it in front of us, this contract, there, there is no job description, there's no job description, there's no qualifications, there's no objectives, there's no, what are we getting for our money, there's no intent, there's, shall focus on advising the mayor with focus on cost control and project coordination and quality control, I mean, that's the level of detail that we have, so, I'm, for $125 an hour, which may or may not exceed what anyone else on the project is getting paid for this, I'm not, like, I, I don't know what it is he's going to be doing, if that makes sense, so, or, you know, what it is we expect to get for our money, you know, at the end of the day, what, what is the product we want, what is the objective, so, I would be more comfortable with, with one of two options, either or, that we put this on our next agenda, two weeks from now, where there's an actual job description, so we know what it is we're hiring him to do, or you can go ahead and hire him up to your $30,000 authority, and at the end of whatever amount of time that would be, I guess that would be three months, if six months is going to be about 60,000-ish, and then at the end of that, then we can see what it is that, what benefit the city is getting for that money, and then extend it if need be, but I'm not comfortable approving a, a hire for a job that I, I don't know what the job is, if that makes sense, I also have questions about, I don't, about advertising for positions, job openings, I don't, I'm not well-versed enough in terms of advertising for job openings or accepting applications or RFPs, or, you know, all of those requirements, and there, I know there's, there are exceptions to it, just lots of questions, so, I say if you want to run with your $30,000 budget, knock yourself out, otherwise, I'm going to need way more information.
Okay, Counselor Larson.
Yeah, I was looking at the, the numbers, worst-case, best-case scenario, and we talked about that, 867 hours, we're looking at 108,000, if we go with even the, the other end of this, and we look at the minimum, at 20 hours a week for six months, at $125, the low end is, is 65,000, and I share some of the same concerns that I've heard voiced up until now, is that for that, on this single page, I'm not really understanding exactly what we're going to be getting for that, I would like to see, I'm not against this as, as an idea, as a concept, but I would like to see something fleshed out a little bit more as to what exactly are we expecting, what are we asking for, what are going to be the measurable and quantifiable products that we are going to be receiving for a minimum of 65,000, up to a possible 108,000 for the duration of this contract.
Okay, anyone else? Yes, Counselor Wiener.
I actually have some questions for Mr. Golds, since he's here tonight, Mr. Golds, can you give us an idea of the, the 60-some projects that you've completed, what kind of, what's like the biggest dollar amount project that you've...
The biggest would be about...
Garrett, Garrett could step up.
The biggest would be about 115 million, recently, that's the high school in Oak Harbor.
And, and how did that project come in as far as budget-wise?
We came in on time and under budget, we had enough money left over that we were able to take the old shop building and turn it into maintenance, so it's a state-of-the-art new maintenance facility, I did quite a few projects in the multimillion-dollar range working in Oak Harbor, with the total amount, if I can peer in here for just a minute and get it, so I don't give you the wrong number, about $300 million total of the projects that I've done in the, for Oak Harbor in the last 20 years, however, that also includes Coopville High School, that I was project manager for that as well, for that process, I continued as an employee for Oak Harbor School District, and they, Coopville kind of rented me, I guess, would be as close a term as I could come up with, to run that project for them, so there's been a plethora of different projects over the years here in, in Oak Harbor.
And, and you were the project manager for those?
Right, right, yeah.
And so could you kind of give us an idea, I mean, as, as a project manager, I assume that means you're responsible for everything down to budgets and timelines and...
From the inception, from the time we selected the property, to the, doing the design, doing the permitting, taking it out to bid, being in charge of all the project meetings and running the projects, I, in that 300 million, I never had a project in this community that was over budget, and in fact, we did end up with using, we had a contingency of 5% to 10% on each project, and we didn't spend all of that, we were able, as I mentioned before, to do a new maintenance building for the school district when we got to the end of the project.
And, and those projects, you, you really, did you have any staff, or was this all subcontractors you were, you were working with?
I had a team that I, that we put together, that I had a full-time secretary, I had a field engineer, I had another project manager who was under me, who, a younger man, who didn't have as much experience, but was a good project manager nonetheless, so I, that was my core of staff, it was just a few people, but additionally, we carried the contracts for geotechnical engineering, surveying, furnishings, et cetera, we carried a lot of additional contracts.
So you were actually responsible all the way down to move in ready for those projects?
Clear through the warranty period, that's correct.
Okay, all right, thank you, Mr. Golds.
You're welcome.
Mayor, could you shed some light on the questions by Mr. Larson and by Ms. Heisen, of what you expect, what, what is the goal, what is the purpose of doing this?
The, the goal and purpose are to get a, a more direct and better communication between my office, city council, and, and the project, I, I think that the, the main thing that drove this decision for me was the, the shock of the cost increases, the last two times they've come to city council, and I think council was every bit as shocked as I was about, about those costs and, and the controlling of those costs, and the, Mr. Golds, I think, has negotiating, negotiating experience that we don't have currently, he has, he has negotiated in his past, my, my conversations with the school district about his reference, the reference checking that I've done, is that he will more than pay for, for his costs through his ability to negotiate and, and, and his experience, so, part of this is, if we go through an extensive process, and, and we, and we burn up two or three more months going through a process and then hire him, we're even closer to the end of this project, I think you had your own questions, Mr. Almberg, about, about scheduling, and do we have, do we have a budget schedule and a, and a real finished, do we have a, a closing schedule, I think is, is exactly what you've asked for a couple of different times, I don't think we've gotten any answer to that, and I, and I think Mr. Golds will be able to help that, with that process, so, it's not only that, it's, it's other cost, concerns that you have had, most of you have spoken to me about those, and I think that Mr. Golds will bring more communication than we've, than we've had, so, that's my main, my, what I, what I hope to see with this.
When I came, may I interject something regarding?
Yes.
Oh, when I came to Oak Harbor, they had a $21 million bond, this was in 1967, and it was for the Oak Harbor Elementary School project, and also for the North Woodby Middle School project, and when I came to work here, I immediately, of course, gobbled up drawings and spread them out and started looking at it, and I noticed a few things, and that's what experience brings to a project like this, and, and frankly, I mean, it may sound like I'm trying to sell a project, but I don't need the work, I'm retired, I'm doing fine, but I love what I do for a living, and what I like to do is represent the community and do a good job and deliver a good product, that's why none of my projects has ever in my career, which goes back 41 years, has ever come in over budget, had a major claim, or had any problems, was not liked by the community, because I'm also strong with the input from the community during the very inception, when I came up here, they, one of the first projects we did was the North Woodby Middle School project, and when I looked at the plans, it dawned on me, I think I see a better way of doing this, the better way of doing it was, was the architect was drawing the plans and putting the new school where currently there is no school, they were going to tear down the old school and put a new school there, and I got thinking, if you take and, and move that concept and change the design accordingly, and move it to a different location, we could have two schools there, and yes, tear that old school down, because it's rife with asbestos, and it leaks like a sieve, and it was, it's electrical, was a joke, it was dangerous, rather than tearing it down from the inception, leave it there and use it during construction, so, so that instead of building a whole campus out there, portables, that we garner no benefit from after our usage, we're faced with either trying to sell them or rent them and lease them to begin with, the estimates were four to $5 million, of that $21 million was going because they had not used common sense and come up with a location for that school that worked, so not only did I use it for North Woodby Middle School, we also used it for every school project we did, and at the end of all the program, we tore it... project we did, and at the end of all the program, we tore it down. The net effect of that was we saved three to five million dollars, or four to five million dollars, I'm sorry. Some of the other things I did when I was working for the school district?
Hey, Gary. Let, yeah, let's just, we'll continue it on up here.
I'm sorry.
Councilor Almberg, you're still?
Thank you. I still had some comments in here after your comments. What I would like to mention is that the concern that I have on this project is that the contingencies have eroded to the point that there's hardly any contingency left on the wastewater treatment plant. The GMP thirteen has, let me go back to the wastewater treatment plant. It was about four and a half million dollars in contingencies, two percent on the owner's side for design, three percent on the contractor's side. That came to about four and a half million dollars. That has been reduced to, down to zero. I think there's something close to a million or less than a million left, because there's some allowances in there that have to be dealt with according to some estimates by Hoffman. Now, when we go to GMP thirteen, we have the same formula. We have three percent for the contractor, and we have two percent contingency for design. And that comes out to, on about a sixteen and a half million dollar project, not including tax, comes out to five million dollars. Excuse me. Excuse me. That is not correct. A half a million dollars. I got my decimal point mixed up here in my mind. It comes to a half a million dollars on that park project. I don't want to be going through that contingency the same way we went through the contingency on the wastewater treatment plant. And part of that, a lot of it is necessary, but a lot of it comes into the front end of the design. What is being left out? What is being included in allowances? And as you know, we just went through, on the GMP thirteen, we did an adjustment of eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of GMP thirteen to backload GMP ten because we had an allowance in there for excavation. Some of these things, I think, need to be drilled down a little bit tighter as we're going through the rest of this project. In addition to the schedule, I think that we have to have the ability to ask more definite questions such as, "Why?" Tell me again, why? And I can tell you this much, though I've never worked with Mr. Golds. I was on the review board for the school district, I think about twenty years ago, where they interviewed several people, and one of them was an employee from Harry Corp., which is a big engineering and construction management company. And they hired the Harry Company and eventually hired Mr. Golds away from them. And as I followed the projects through, I formed a long-term friendship with our former superintendent, Dr. Rick Schulte, and followed these projects in terms of how the costs has come out. I was also on the review board for the financing for the high school. In fact, I was chair of the high school committee to push that thing through, and also was on the review board for funding for the stadium. And in all of these meetings, Mr. Golds has been involved in this. So I have some connection on his history. Now, when this came up, and I'll just disclose this, and I don't think Dr. Schulte would object to me saying this, I said, "Tell me about Gary Golds and your experience with him on that job." And this is what he told me, quote, "He's fair, he's honest, he's very knowledgeable, and he's a damn tough negotiator." And I think that at this particular point, we need somebody working on our team who is fair, who is honest, who is very knowledgeable, and a damn tough negotiator, because I don't want to see our budget for this GMP thirteen continue to be eroded or the balance of this project. We have about twenty-five percent to go on this project, and I think it's time for us to kind of tighten up the levers just a little bit and get a little bit closer to where these engineering estimates are supposed to be. Thank you. Now, oh, excuse me. But I would consider, I would consider bringing this back to the next meeting if we have to get a better definition of what the role is, what's expected, and what the chain of command or the communication process is going to be so that we understand that. I don't have a problem necessarily with the general content of this agreement, but I would like to have more measurable information on what this relationship is going to mean as we go forward. Thank you.
Councilor Cervantes.
Is there anyone that hasn't spoken? I just want to follow up. I have no problem paying someone, a qualified individual, a wage, especially if there's a chance, hope, that it's going to save money. I mean, that balances itself out, and that can usually make sense if you have the right team or the right individual. A question I have, you know, we're kind of talking here about, we're in the eleventh hour, and so we're really talking about GMP thirteen is what's been referenced. In this process, and Mr. Golds, I don't know if you have experience with the GCCM process and these guaranteed maximum price contracts, we've kind of, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't know if there's some wiggle room, we've spent the first twelve, we're gearing up, we approved number thirteen. So a question that's sitting here rattling around in my head, and I'll trust Mr. Larson's math on the low end, can we save sixty-five to one oh eight on sixteen million dollars? Because that's what we approved with GMP thirteen. Can we save what we would pay you? And once again, I don't have a problem paying someone to save money and/or maybe improve the process. Maybe it's not a savings, but we end up with a better product, a better end product. So that's something that's going through my head. One of the things I know we had in the works, and if you could touch on this, Mayor, actually, I'll bring this back, is the C2G, if there's any work left there that we'll dovetail in. But if we move forward with this, for me, I would want to see, if not every, we have council meetings twice a month, a report card or some kind of report feedback at a minimum monthly, so as we step through the next six months, or maybe it's the first three months, we realize we're not seeing the value that we need to see here, we can, you know, terminate this contract. But some kind of feedback so we can, I guess, put something tangible to the dollars that are going out. And I know we were talking about some work being done, but I think that's wrapping up, or is that wrapped up with the C2G?
No, no, the C2G has started their data gather some time ago with, Joe Stoll has sent many, many, many volumes to them. They have not started their analysis. So the analysis is probably twenty thousand of the thirty thousand dollars in that agreement. So they have not even started that. So I have not spent, or that money, if you would choose to, I had a conversation with C2G today, and I told them I'd call them again tomorrow. I could either stop that, or I could, what I see is that if we have information that we want to continue to use them for, we may be able to do that. But I think maybe, I don't think even ten thousand dollars has been spent on that contract. I don't have an exact number. I'm going to guess it's somewhere closer to five thousand that has been spent on that. So, you know, they could be stopped if Council wanted to do that.
All right. I'll yield the floor at the moment on that. Thank you.
Okay. Yes. Mayor Potters.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Golds, how do you see yourself, I mean, you're not at the ground floor, you're at towards the end. There's been a lot, we have a wonderful department hits, and they have been, quote, "working their butts off." And I'm hoping that by having you onboard, this is a relief for them, but also they have someone that has worked with expansive projects to balance things off, and if they're bogged down with something, you would be there to check it out or whatever. I mean, how do you see your relationship? Because it's not the beginning, it's towards the end. And I don't think any of them would feel threatened, but it might be nice. We don't, fortunately, we have a temporary city administrator who is very much involved with our finance, keeping that going. And she can't do two jobs at once. But how do you see your relationship? I'm hoping that?
With the Oak Harbor, city of, pardon me, city of Oak Harbor team, as it were, I can work with them, I'm very confident. It's very similar to what I did working in schools, same type thing. The business manager, I was very close to the business manager, met with them regularly, gave them reports, let them know where I stand, and I can keep the city council up to speed. I can do any of those things. I've done it many, many times over the years, and I'm comfortable doing that. I don't have any concerns, as it were, but I'm a little bit at a disadvantage in that I don't, I don't know enough about the project to answer some of these questions as fully as they deserve. But I understand the process, and I've gone through the process, and I'm confident that I could add something to the project. There's no question in my mind. And as far as I, earlier when we were discussing this, it was brought up that I would be a tough negotiator. I am a tough negotiator, but I'm also a team builder. That's, to me, is the success in a project, is the people who get hired. If you hire good people, you're going to have a good project.
Well, I think you'll find we have an excellent team.
That's, I know most of the team because I've worked with the city so much, so I know these people, and I've worked with many, many familiar people. Ray over there, there's somebody I worked with quite a few times over the years, and the building department, all these individuals I've worked with, so I'm confident.
All right. Thank you very much.
Okay. Councilor Larson.
Mr. Golds, thank you for being here tonight. And I just have another question for you. As we're looking ahead at this, we are in the, we're in the final lap of this race, and this city, this council, the mayor's office, has been reeling with these cost overages that have come along. My question isn't so much about how well you're going to work with the team. You have an impressive resume. I have every belief that every project you've ever touched, as you're saying, you, from soup to nuts, from beginning to end, you were there and you were able to get these projects in at or under cost. With us being so far along, with so many things already being in play, I'm questioning how much latitude is there really going to be for you to make a noticeable difference from here to completion of this project?
That's a good question, and one that needs to be answered. I find it a little difficult at this point in time, without getting into the documents and understanding where they are, to answer that. In a general sense, I can tell you, no, there's, I would be very surprised if there's any giant, easy-to-reach, low-hanging fruit out there in terms of savings on a project at this point in time. But you're talking about sixteen million dollars worth of work in the project, the Phase thirteen, I think you termed it. There's some opportunities there through value engineering. And just controlling a project keeps costs down. And I don't mean just controlling the financial flow of the project, making sure information's going to the people that need the information through the request for information, change order proposals, vetting of the change order proposals to make sure they're commensurate for the work that's being done. That's something that I can see will give you savings. However, I don't know the team that's out there now, so I am a little bit grasping in the dark, but I do feel that there's, there will be ample opportunities to demonstrate savings on this project. I got to believe that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilor Heisen.
Thank you, Mayor. Before I get to my follow-up stuff, I want to follow up on something Councilmember Almberg said to clarify. He said that Gary would be fair, honest, and knowledgeable, and that you wanted someone fair, honest, and knowledgeable on the team. I'm just hoping you weren't implying that we don't have someone fair, honest, and knowledgeable on our team currently. I don't think that's what you meant, but I wanted to give you a chance to let us know if that's what you meant or not.
May I respond to that? I think in reference to a person working on the team, this was not in reference to anybody on the team, but in terms of him being on the team, he, I, it's my understanding, because I haven't worked for him, and I made that clear, talking to contractors who've been on his projects, even though he wasn't managing them, they were subcontracting on the project, and by Dr. Schulte, said he is fair, he's honest, he's knowledgeable, and he's a damn tough negotiator. And so I'm referring to a person in that particular position, and that's not to take anything away from our person, our people. I have a great deal of respect for Joe and Brett and Kathy's and everybody else who's working on that, including Hoffman's experience on that project. I'm not personally happy with the erosion of the contingencies and allowances. That's the part that bothers me the most about this project. And I think that Gary is the right person, or somebody like Gary with that background is the right person to add this. And may I also add this piece of experience in my many years of forty-some years in construction? The last twenty-five percent of the project is a lot more difficult to do than the first twenty-five percent. The last five percent is the most difficult part of it, and I'm sure, and I have confidence in our group to push to the last five percent. But I would like personally to see a stronger person added to that who has strengths in those capacities of closing out a project relative to the budget and relative to the schedule.
Okay. I, yes, no, I got the point that you think he's fair, honest, and knowledgeable. I just wanted to make sure that you weren't implying that we were lacking that on our team currently, because I don't believe that we are. I think that Mr. Golds' experience with school projects is, it's all fine and good, but discussing qualifications is really here nor there at this point, since we don't have a job description. Still, my issue is we don't have a job description. So I, you know, for two years, the subject of hiring, having an audit person has been on the table, and so, again, eleventh hour, if this is going to happen, I want specifics versus we're going to hire somebody to make ourselves feel better and/or cover our butts. So I would move to bring this back at our next council meeting with a clear job description and list of objectives. And that, sorry, that's not like an official motion. I haven't, it's not my motion, I'm?
Is that a practice run?
No, no, no. Yes, exactly. This is me thinking out loud. I would move, because, you know, Mayor, you mentioned three or two or three months. I'm talking two weeks. I mean, two weeks. I hardly think at this point in the project, another two weeks is going to make that much of a difference. So I'd like to see more detail about what exactly it is we expect from this temporary employee, and going through all my notes to make sure, yeah, chain of command, communication expectations, et cetera, et cetera. I, you know, this council, in previous administrations and incarnations, has been bitten in the butt by approving one-page contracts that were this open-ended and this vague because we would challenge something later, and, oh, well, it just, you know, it's just the lack of detail is something that I'm not comfortable with for a number of reasons. So, so having said that, all right, Carla. So um so having said that, I'm ready, Carla. Um I move to, would it be postpone? Postpone's the word. Um I move to postpone this agenda item to our next council meeting.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to postpone this agenda item to the next council meeting. Yes, Councilor.
Thank you. Second, as we could obviously discuss it.
Sure.
I think it goes without saying, if we do that, then we would want, there's no need to amend that motion, but we would want to see the job description. Qualifications or resume would have been handy. So I think those things would be appropriate. That's just kind of the bare minimum we would expect out of anyone that we're hiring, especially with this dollar amount attached to it.
Yeah, I didn't work that in, because I figured that was obvious.
Mayor Protim, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, little bit worried when um the timing here, I mean, we don't have a lot of time. I I understand job description, um what we're what we're getting out of this contract. But also, if we've already started on GMP thirteen, and that's his main, I guess, project besides the closeout on the wastewater treatment plant, two weeks can mean a lot. A lot can happen in two weeks when you're towards the end of a project of accepting of stuff, making sure you have the next group of workers. I mean, there's a lot going on. So I don't know if you need to enact your your thirty thousand priority on that in order to get the description. I mean, I or he's not gonna work on the project at all for two. I mean, I don't know how quickly when when Mr. Arbison was saying that they've already started on GMP thirteen. So what is Mr. Golds gonna lose by not being part of the team for that two weeks? Or I mean, I'm just, I'm throwing it out because I don't understand all the scheduling and stuff. It may not seem like a lot when we've been working on this for ten years, but two weeks may be a huge difference, too, towards the end. So I'm just asking the question. Maybe Mr. Arbison would be able to explain that or or someone. I don't know.
Councilor Weisner.
I just had a comment. I I think the reality is, we've got forty million dollars left on the table here. It's not just GMP thirteen. Granted, granted, all these GMPs have been approved, but as as Brett had said earlier, you know, they're they're working on GMP nine and ten presently. Uh I think there's even still some work from GMP seven that that's still yet to wrap up. Uh so forty million dollars according to the latest budget that we presented that we've written, about a hundred million dollars of the checks, and we have another forty million to go.
I agree. Yes. Councilor Ombert.
You know, I think that time is of the essence on this. However, I am willing to delay this for until the next council meeting. But I would like then to add a friendly amendment to this amendment that the when this is brought forward to us, that it includes a job description, a job organizational protocol, reviewable and measurable goals, and a requirement, focus on the um the use and review of allowances and contingencies, and with focus emphasis on the closeout requirements of this project. And as it was stated in this document here, he reports to the mayor, and so I would leave that up to the ma- that was the end of my motion. Excuse me.
I saw three people.
I'd leave it up to the mayor to report back on these things. I'm sorry about that. So that's that's the friendly amendment to.
I'll second that amendment.
Okay, so we have a motion to to amend.
Amendment to my own motion.
We have a motion in a second to amend the motion. And I saw three people writing a lot faster than me. Did you did you get all that?
I did. I think I did.
Okay. You wanna read it? Please?
Oh, me? Okay. Uh I believe that was a friendly motion to amend Councilwoman Heisen's motion to postpone for two weeks, to add a add more detail, a job description, resume, organizational protocol, reviewable and measurable um goals, uh focus, add a focus on allowances, review contingencies, and closeout protocols. That wasn't part of the motion.
So we'll we'll first vote on the motion to amend. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes. And then we'll vote on the motion to postpone until next meeting with with the amendments, right?
A vote on the amended motion.
Okay. Any other discussion about that? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes. So uh we'll just we'll leave it at that. I in answer to your question, Mayor Protim, I I don't think at this time I plan on doing enacting my um in fact, I'll have to talk to Mr. Golds to see if he's still still in the game. So I'll do that first. So, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good. Okay, we'll we will move on, and and we're going to do item number eight C next. Uh that's the scenic heights stormwater outfall, authorization to solicit construction bids. I see our city engineer, Joe Stow, coming to the podium.
Yeah, Mayor, council members. We've got a presentation queuing up. So this this presentation is authorization to bid for scenic heights outfall. Got a little bit of project background for you. This has been going on for quite some time. It's a project we've been working on for many, many years. The the earliest record I found on it was two thousand and five, and I know it extended way before that. And that's when Greg Kane, uh I found a report of his that was looking at the the bluff over there off of scenic heights and what particular property owner, um property owner's concern. Uh the report indicated that an increase in runoff in that area caused was had the potential or was causing some erosion of the bluff. So in two thousand and seven, um the property owner hired Facum and Kingma to do a series of survey work, and it involved topo and and different things. But out of that came property line dispute. Well, discrepancy is probably a better word. Um the property to the south overlapped with the property to the north. And it took a little bit of time to get that squared away. It wasn't until twenty thirteen that a record of survey was finalized, correcting that property line issue, allowing the city to move forward with some sort or anybody to move forward with correction or solution to the bluff issue. So at that point, the um the city took on the the concept of of improving the outfall on behalf of the property owner and the community. Um we hired David O' Consulting to provide us a design for that. Um in twenty fifteen, as we were going through the um design process, we went out to the project site with Fish and Wildlife, and they uh for some reason believed that it was a um creek or stream. We jokingly called it not a creek because it only flowed occasionally, and it didn't occur until after the drainage basin had opened up further, which I'll show you in a minute. But because of the permitting complications, we brought in ESA, which is a consultant that specializes in environmental permitting. So just some additional background on what we're working with. And I'll I'll have a graphic of this in a minute, too. But the original drainage area that feeds this outfall was originally much smaller. Um until farming and development occurred, it was about nine acres. Now it's upwards of one hundred and seventy-five acres in the drainage area. There's also a couple properties related to the Gary Oaks development that we're familiar with, that have items in their annexation agreements to handle downstream analysis of flows created from their property, and would have resulted in the developers being potentially responsible for improving this outfall. So I know this map is a little bit rough to look at at first, but if you look, the the right side of the map is Oak Harbor, north is up. Um you can see the text on the right side of the streets, the screen, that's scenic heights. About a third of the way over is Highway twenty, and it moves off into the forest off to the left. So the original drainage area was relatively small. It didn't even make it up to the highway. Uh there was a natural rise there that prevented it from flowing over. We were successful in negotiating with Fish and Wildlife that because the improvements that created this larger basin were man-made, and we could tie together enough history from personal accounts and graphics and old topo and old aerial photographs, we were able to stitch together that that, in fact, was the case. And because of that, they did not consider that a stream any longer. So it is now officially not a stream. So that allowed us to move forward with permit, and uh has helped us move forward to where we're at today. Just a couple photos of the project site. If you know, when I when I first heard bluff, I thought sheer bluff, you know, with nothing on it. Well, there's vegetation on it, but it's not something you're gonna wanna climb up. Um it's it's it is relatively, it is particularly steep. The other photo on the right is taken from the the backyard of of the property that it's that's closest to this outfall. And um you can see how abrupt that edge is and how it's drawn closer to you. It actually, you can, there is an actual draw where the drainage passes over the bluff. So what we asked David O' to work with us on is designing an improvement, a fix for this. I think an initial design or thought was to do some sort of horizontal drilling. Uh soil conditions didn't allow for that. So we worked with the design team and came up with kind of an interesting fix. There's, we're gonna use fifteen-inch corrugated polyethylene up to a a gravity block near the edge, uh well, back far enough from the edge. And then we're gonna use that to support an eighteen-inch high-density polyethylene pipe that'll have a an elbow on it as it goes over the bluff and 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 go down to the bottom at the bottom of the forty-foot bluff and have a diffuser. There won't be any need to work on the bluff itself or from the beach. All that'll be extended over and supported by the gravity block that's constructed up upstream from it. So this is a summary, kind of used the same format as we did with the the clean water facility recently. So our existing estimated budget for the project, and this was in the agenda packet as well, is close to two hundred and forty thousand. Spent to date is about sixty-seven thousand, and construction costs look like they're gonna be around a hundred and fifty thousand is what our construction estimate has consistently been hovering around. We will have a small amount of um other professional services during construction, but we don't expect to use the archaeological or geotech any further of those budgets. Um the we'll use our staff, Gideon, to help with any further archaeology needs on the project. And with that, I'll take any questions.
So I guess so. Make sure the public doesn't have any input or questions. Okay, seeing none, bring it back to council. Uh Councilor Larson.
Judge, I have a quick question. Um there were a lot of different years up there. This has been in the works for some time. You know, things happened in two thousand and fourteen and fifteen. And you said that that uh construction amount of a hundred and forty-seven thousand, a hundred and fifty thousand has been hovering around there for quite some time. Is that an estimate from way back then in two thousand and fifteen dollars? Or is that when was the last time that was updated in real time?
That was a recent um update that was provided to us, actually kind of delayed getting the agenda bill in.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Councilor Weisner.
Mr. Stow, I noticed there's a line item on there for right-of-way property for eleven thousand dollars. Are we acquiring some right-of-way here or?
Um, that has already been expended, and that was in relation to two different easements that needed to be written. One was across what was Ann Lizak's property. It's now changed hands. And there was another easement needed across the street on Waldron's property because we're doing work on the other side of the street as well.
And so there was no existing pipe running on on the the first property? I understand the Waldron property being added to to that road crossing.
No, where it crossed underneath scenic heights, it opened a open channel. And then it re-entered a pipe as it crossed on to Lizak's property, and it was a twelve-inch corrugated pipe. And it had either broken off or was severed right at the the bluff's edge.
And was that an old existing outfall that was installed by the city or?
No. It was an old existing private outfall.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Protim.
Uh, thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Stow, wasn't this property that we annexed from the county?
It would have been, yes.
Was during after oh eight?
I don't I don't know when this particular area was annexed.
I don't know when.
All right. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Councilor Larson.
I'd like to make a motion that we authorize the staff to solicit construction bids for the scenic heights stormwater outfall project.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second to as the recommended action, motion authorizing the staff to solicit construction bids for the scenic heights stormwater outfall project. Motion by Councilor Hanson and second by Mayor Protim. Seeing no other, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Item number eight C. We'll go back to item number eight B, actually. Professional Services Agreement, BHC Consultants for the Passive Sewer Overflow Structure, Amendment Number Four. And City Engineer, Mr. Stow.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Um so uh this is a revisit of something we discussed at the last council meeting. I've got a bit more detail, and I've had some discussions with the design team, so I'm gonna dive in here. So the original vault, the east vault, interestingly enough, was constructed in the forties by the Public Works Administration. And I had to read up on this myself, but the Public Works Administration was like the Conservation Corps, and they were, the government employed millions of people to do construction-type projects. This was one of them. Many of them were unskilled, not all of them, but it was during the review of the structure that was definitely a concern that came to our structural engineers' attention. So originally, this was the this vault was the settling vault for the outfall into Oak Harbor. So all the sewage from that area would go into the tank, and it'd be kind of like a septic system, and it just directed outfall. So I don't have it, it was hard to track down some of the timeline, but after nineteen forty at some point, the west vault was constructed, and that's the one on the left in the graphic. And for for whatever reason, the top four and the top, the top of the vault was left four and a half feet below the old east vault. Can't say for sure why, but that's that's the way they built it. Now, this, I believe, was was part of the pump station that was installed that sent sewage over to our um treatment plant at the time when the Clean Water Act came into effect. At that time, a chain-link fence was installed around both vaults to prevent access to the top. In nineteen seventy-two, we found a set of plans where sidewalk was installed installed on the south side of Pioneer Way. Um at that point, because the sidewalk encroached on so closely to the tanks, there was a wall built. Um that four and a half feet was built. There was a wall on built on top of that tank to hold back the soil so they could build that sidewalk. And they installed that railing, the pipe railing that we're familiar with down there, across, so still yet again limiting access to the top of those those So I and I maybe somebody in here might remember this, but sometime after seventy-two, uh the concrete, the the top of that west lid was backfilled and then poured over like like a sidewalks would be. top of that west lid was backfilled and then poured over like a sidewalks would be. And at the same time, I believe stairs were constructed down to the beach. So, that, at that point, the pipe handrail was moved outward to what we see today. So, this is kind of trying to graphically show what happened, is they took, you know, we had the existing east vault in blue, the west vault in yellow, and then they filled that area above with soil that's in green and brought it all up to sidewalk level. And what has happened is that area in green has subsided about four inches. And I can't say if it was poor compaction on the material, or if it's just, if there's some way that it's getting out of the box, can't say for sure, but there's a void there. And this is, I just brought this picture up to show, this is what it looks like today. The east vault on the left side where the bench is, is the one that was originally constructed. Over to the right side, near where the power pole is, is the newer tank that has four and a half feet below grade with another lid on, another sidewalk pour on top of it. So, now I'm switching views around. I used the same graphic last time we talked. Out over the water, looking at Passaic, looking to the north. So, the original east tank was constructed, then the west tank and lift station. So, in February, I talked with Hank, and in February of 2015, I believe Phelps is an uncle, maybe, of one of the pilots that was killed in the, thank you, I'm getting a nod. Is an uncle of one of the three pilots that died in the accident in 2013 over Eastern Washington, one of the Prowlers. So, in June of 2015, a motion was presented by City Council approving to allow the placement of the Prowler Memorial at the Marina Lookout on East Pioneer Way near Passaic Street, and I pulled that straight out of the agenda packet from them. And I'll discuss this, the location and all that, and just admit a little bit more. This is, this was taken this afternoon. It is sitting out in the back of Public Works Yard, the monument is. The right-hand side is the base. The middle of the screen is the middle, the middle piece, and then in the crate, kind of in the background, is actually the obelisk. And altogether, it stands close to 12 feet tall when you stack them all up. So, now I'm going to switch gears a little bit into BHC's agreement. So, their original agreement was approved October 11th of 2016 for a fee of just under $17,000. The scope of that work was brought forward because, as staff, we had concerns about the structural stability of putting something 2,000 pounds on a vault that was as old as that. We didn't want it to be unsafe for the public. We've done that on other art projects, and most of the larger ones you've seen around town have done the same type of assessment. So, that original deliverable was a report that had a couple of findings to it. One was, is the roof structure was unable to support assembly loading, is the way it was phrased. And what that means is, you know, a group of people standing on there to either look at the new monument, to watch the hydroplane races, to watch a parade go by, any large group of people, it wasn't even able of handling that, much less a monument. And at that time, in that report, they, BHC provided a couple of alternatives that they worked through, and with some basic opinions of cost. One was considering use, filling the tank with CDF and filling that void and providing the support using that. The other option that they looked at was replacing the lids completely. Internally, we considered whether we could pour a slab over the slab, and later, I'll talk a little bit more about why that is a little bit difficult to do. And I'll talk a little bit more in a minute about the option of filling it with soil or some other whatever, to fill that void, to provide structural fill. So, Amendment One to BHC's contract came forward on December 20th. It was a no change adjustment, no cost adjustment, just extending the timeframe from 2016 to middle of 2017. Amendment Two, now, this is where we asked them, asked BHC to provide a proposal on a design for the, replacing the lids. And in that, we included a construction administration fee, so we didn't have to come back when it condemned for construction. We knew they were replacing the lids on an old structure. We know we're going to have questions for the structural engineer on what to do next. So, that contract involved providing plans for the demolition of the lids, plans and specs for the new lids, and a new handrail, relatively basic handrail for it, and construction administration, which I already talked about. In the timeframe that they were working on the design, a couple of things came up that we asked, as a city, we asked the consultant to look at. The first one was, is this is a viewpoint for the city and one of very few that we have, looking out over the harbor, that has the room to actually congregate and look out over the water. So, there was an interest by different parties to look at ways of making it nicer, making it better. One of those was, can we put some sort of architectural paver system over top of the concrete lids? That didn't pan out, that went away pretty quick. The next thing we asked about was, okay, well, if we can't do that, what about doing a scored concrete similar to what you see on Pioneer Way where they saw cut in a pattern? And then, the idea of architectural handrails was brought up, not just simple pipes or the fence, the railing that we use on Pioneer Way, but looking at something that's more transparent to broaden that viewpoint up. They took all that and rolled that into the design and bid package as additive alternates for those options, and it actually extended into replacing the sidewalk as well, because the tanks, as we got out there and worked on it more, we found that those tanks actually go three and a half, three feet into the sidewalk. And when you go out there and walk, you'll see there's a notch, and if you start pulling that tank lid off, you're into working on the sidewalk as well as the ADA ramp that's immediately adjacent. So, November 19th, there was another amendment to their contract. There was no additional fee, but what we did do is a time extension, and we moved budget from construction administration to design tasks, with anticipation that when we came back to go to construction, we would amend their contract for an appropriate amount of construction services. So, Amendment Four, which is before you tonight, is for remaining design modifications that came out of the survey that I talked about last time. We had a, went out, it was kind of a byproduct. We were looking at a different project, and the conversation came up that you can't get a building permit across property lines. And as we're looking at this project, we're going, wait a minute, this one's across not only one property line, but two. And I showed a graphic last time, in the assessor's maps, it looks like the whole thing is, is all the way out, out of the right-of-way. We hired Rich Fraser to go out and do a survey and draft an easement. And in fact, it's a relatively small sliver that's on a private property. The remainder's either in old right-of-way that would have been passic extending out to the water, or city-owned property. Along with that came new information, and we talked about that a bit last time. And so, the, that new information with new elevations, new dimensions needed to be, need to be checked. And that's part of this contract. And then, restoring the construction administrative fee of, which had gone up a touch to $13,500. So, this is the same thing that I've just talked about in the table form, so if you go back to this later and want to look at it, I've, it's summarized here. It's the dates of all the different contract and amendments, cost summary, and I broke those out for each one, which one was construction, which was intended to be construction administration, and a little description of each one to just sums up what I already covered. So, questions? These questions that came up at the last meeting. First one is, have the proponents of the monument been contacted? They have been involved in the project, and I know that Hank has been the primary contact with them. And I believe that he contacted them since the last meeting, at least that's my understanding. I wasn't part of the conversation. Is there another location for the monument? When they were originally looking for a location, they did consider other locations. One of them was up near the Veterans Park where the landslide was, that we have the railing up, and we're working on that project too. Another location that they looked at was up near the Yacht Club, and where the sidewalk veers off towards the marina, there's that kind of triangular sublet grass area. That was another location that was considered. But based on the information that they had at the time, they felt with the Walk of Honor and the overlook and the availability of space that the vault lids would be the best location. And this one here, the next one is for Mr. Alenberg specifically, can we use buckshot? And the answer's no. I'm sorry to say, we talked to the consultant about it. Water weighs just over 62 pounds per cubic foot. Compacted soil's 125 pounds per cubic foot. It's too much loading on a wall that we don't know the design of. If we were to fill the tank with it, we don't know what for sure would happen. That is why the consultant suggested using CDF, because you could bring that up to a certain point, let it cure, bring it up again, let it cure. And when we do the wash between having a usable tank that we could use for different things, and the cost of replacing the lids, the choice was to replace the lids. Is there a cheaper alternative? Well, the cheapest alternative is to do nothing and move the fence. So, yeah, there's a cheaper alternative. Is there another place for the monument? I'm sure we can work with people to find another place for it. That's a discussion for maybe another day. So, I want to bring this note up, and I wanted to, actually, I was trying to think of a clever graphic to show this, but moving the monument to a new location doesn't change the fact that we have a risk to the city out there right now. The monument is a separate issue. It happened to be the catalyst to finding out that the lids were very thin and not good to leave that way. But just moving the monument isn't the end of the story. If we move the monument to another location, we still have to consider what to do with these tank lids. So, I kind of broke it out into a couple pretty obvious options. One is do nothing, leave it as it is, that's always, that's always an option, right? The next is to award the contract to BHC with intent of moving forward with replacing the lids. That is not what you're awarding, would be awarding tonight, it's just the design contract to finish it and get the bid package together. The third option is to fence off the lids, pull all the furniture and install railing so that, to prevent people from not only accessing the lids, but remove the attractive nuisance of having furniture out there and planters. And I threw this one in here just because I thought it was kind of an interesting way of looking at it. We spent a lot of time tonight talking about the Clean Water Facility and project costs. This is also a sewer project. We have, it is in the budget, but if it's something that's not attractive to council at this time, we could remove the furniture, fence it off, we'd have to remove the furniture anyway, right? Because we're going to replace the lids. And we can come back to this at a later date when we have a different comfort level, or we've had chance to look at other locations for the monument, or whatever you care to move forward with. So, with that, I'll leave it open to any questions. I'm not going to recommend one of those over the other. There is a recommended action in your packet, but that's, take it or leave it.
Want to see if the public has any questions or input? Okay, seeing none. Mayor Protiem.
All right, thank you. One of the things that, I mean, Mr. Stowe, that struck out to me in our packet was that throughout the design phase of this project, it was decided to take this opportunity to further improve the vault lids for the benefit of the public. And I remember, we had a joint session with, I think, Planning and Parks about vision for the city and a walkway, expanding the walkway downtown to make it, you know, more of a boardwalk or whatever. If we don't do anything and we just move it back, then we're just delaying that. But with this, we would fix the safety problem. Yes, it seems to be escalating in price, as Mr. Alenberg pointed out, that it's 60% of the cost to get the work done. But if not, we're just delaying. But that vision everyone was so excited for, to have the safe and a wider walkway along our waterfront for the public and for people coming into town. And by delaying it, then you're just putting off costs that could triple, and we decide to take it back up in five years. We've already done all this design. It's a little bit more, yes, that's more money than I write a check for, but I think sometimes we've put blinders on for this project, and we lose sight of the big picture of the vision for the city and the walkway along there, and from the marina all the way over to Friends Marsh. And I'm not happy with the engineering, it just seems like they've kind of milked us along the way. Oh, well, we found out another reason you need to pay us more money, or another. But that vision, I think everyone would still need to strive for, so I just think we need to do this. I don't want it to seem like we're doing it to put a statue there. As you said, it was the reason why we found the faults in this to begin with. But you're right, there's not a lot of overlook, but the vision was to even somehow be able to build out from the sidewalk and make it over the water to have a really nice walkway like a lot of other harbor communities have done. And I just think I lost part of that vision of what we'd like to see in our community. So, thank you for all your work, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I would like to see that obelisk, that monument honoring those pilots also in our city, but not necessarily there. And I'll tell you why. There is, if you want to have it there, Joe, we talked about this earlier. One thing that hasn't been explored is, number one, a structural slab over the existing slab with a medium barrier along the edge of the sidewalk that could be incorporated monolithically into that, or a railing there so that people can access in that if you're going to have it there. That issue has never been brought up to us. And the other question is, I'm just kind of curious, if the engineers, did they give you calculations on that buckshot versus fluid against that wall?
No, they did not.
At first, when we talked to them, or you talked to them, they didn't know what buckshot was.
It took some research, actually. It's the tailings off of the process at the gravel plant. It's similar to pea gravel, but it's not.
And they add air and transmit to it, so it sets up in a hurry, okay? There will be fluid with that, but when it sets up, it's 100% compaction when it sets up. And you and I both know that backfilled, it's 100% compacted, that's enclosed, is not flowing the same way laterally like water.
It may not, but the weight of that material will push outward on a wall.
Okay, but let's, they didn't give you the calculations, and we're not going to go down that road. But what I could support is if they would take, if they want to do it, if you want to do it, and if they want to do it, do a structural slab on that with shoring, LS shoring going down through the manholes down there. You can easily get them in there. You can have one manhole and get shoring in and out of there, and put a slab on top of that thing, and use it the way that you want to use it. And this doesn't take an $80,000 engineering contract to do that. This thing has grown way beyond perspective, way beyond perspective for me. If we pass this tonight, it's $79,801, and that does not include Rich Fraser's survey, which is probably in the $2,000 range for him to do the legal and the survey on that thing. I'm just guessing on that. Let me give you a comparison for the benefit of the council. We just passed, we approved the Scenic Heights Outfall Project. That's a very complicated engineering project. It takes a lot of detail. engineering project. It takes a lot of detail, a lot of cross-section. We're talking about civil engineers versus structural engineers here. The rates are pretty much the same. A lot of the steps are the same, too. You can look in your packet, and you'll see they have cross-sections in there. It took a lot of pre-engineering for this thing, the survey, and it took a lot of permitting. But the engineering for that outfall, the engineering for the outfalls, twenty-eight thousand six hundred and eighty-six dollars. Twenty-eight thousand for the engineering.
That was the original, close to the original amount.
That's what I'm looking at right here, that we were given. And for the design, or construction services, is thirty-two hundred and twenty-three dollars. Three thousand two hundred and twenty-three dollars. If you go back on your presentation up there, for construction services, go back one there, they had thirteen thousand and some, for construction services on this little thing. It doesn't make sense to me, Joe. It's just out of scale, totally, totally out of scale. And if I add in Davido's, and they're a competent engineering company, Citi's used them many times, I've worked with them on private projects. If you add in engineering and survey, or not engineering, but survey to this, it's seventy-six hundred dollars. The total engineering for this thing, including survey, is thirty-nine thousand three seventy-five. Now, I know we're not comparing equal projects, but we're talking about similar types of projects. My objection is not about what we want to do on that site. It's about what we want to spend on that site for this engineering. It's totally out of scale. You and I have talked about that. I'm not going to ask you to repeat some of the things that you mentioned to me. But I cannot support this the way that it's presented. If they want to take a run at this, to put a slab on that thing, a structural slab, and go that route, I would consider that. But I wouldn't, I cannot say we can spend eighty thousand dollars on engineering for this little thing when we can put it someplace else. So, I will be voting no on this tonight. Thank you.
Counselor Harrison.
I just want to echo counsel. Remember Muns' comment that this is way bigger than a monument. This isn't eighty thousand dollars to put a single monument up. I mean, this, and this isn't an outfall pipe either. Councilmember Almberg, I mean, we're talking, you know, I'm looking at this, this, you know, sewer, and you don't need to respond, but, you know, vault lid, sewer, no, we're recording.
Address the mayor, not me.
That's why I said you didn't need to respond. I'm commenting on a comment. As Ms. Muns said, this is a much larger project. We're talking railings, we're talking fixed sidewalks, we're talk, I mean, this is not about one single monument. This is a much larger project. And it's a project that we've been promising the public for a long time, and that has been part of our vision and our plan for the waterfront trail for quite a while. So, I don't want that to get lost in the discussion. You know, I mean, everything costs more than we want it to. But I, I mean, in order for us to make this look the way, in order for us to make this match the vision that we have already established for that area, we're going to have to do it and spend money on it. And the longer that we put it off, the more it's going to cost, with or without the memorial. This is something that will eventually need to happen, and once again, the longer we put it off, the more it's going to cost. So, I just want us to keep the big picture in mind in terms of replacing the sidewalk, the railing. I mean, people don't enjoy having, didn't enjoy that, having that Veterans Park section roped off and being interrupted. So, I, you know, I mean, I, do I love it? No. But do I want to pay more for it down the road? No, I don't. So, I'm with Ms. Muns on this, and I would, I would support getting this done and moving on with our lives. That is all.
Counselor Servades.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Stowell, you've probably given this to us. Do we have, granted, we have to give you an option, but let's say we went for option, what was it? A was do nothing. If we wanted to improve this space for the public and put the monument there, do we have kind of an overall engineer's estimate as to what we're looking at for total cost?
If we went with the bare bones design, it's right around a hundred thousand. If we went with architectural improvements, it's closer to a hundred and thirty.
Okay, so the scored concrete, nicer railing. This is a tricky one, because it's part Public Works basic project. It's also parks. I mean, I picture that, we've all been on some walk, and all of a sudden you pop up to a little pocket park, and you're like, wow, this is kind of cool. And granted, you have a scenic overlook the entire way along there. But if you arrived at a location that was improved, and you had a monument, you stopped and read, realized the history as to what had happened with VAQ 129, it becomes a whole different project. And I can very much appreciate Mr. Almberg's comments as far as proportion of engineering to overall project costs. And you have, Mr. Almberg, obviously, the most extensive construction background of all of us combined and put together, probably. So, I'm reminded, especially these last two agenda items, this is where the public process is not necessarily expedient, and it's not always the most efficient. I mean, that outfall since 2005, we approved this almost three years ago. Granted, we've discovered a lot since then as far as the condition of those vaults and the sidewalks. So, this is one where I'm probably going to side, on the side of, while it's not necessarily the most, I wouldn't even say efficient, that's not the right words. We could obviously do this a bare bones minimum. But I envision improving that area as more of a pocket park in addition to honoring those folks with that monument. But this is a place, I think, that we can actually, if we spend the money, it will be a nice addition to our city. Maybe not, I'll stop with that. Thank you, Mayor.
Counselor Wiener.
Mr. Stowell, could you clarify for us, both east and west lids are substandard?
That's correct.
And they're both equally substandard? I mean, both of them are considered unsafe for any public loading?
No more than twenty people.
So, and each lid, or, I mean?
Combined on the whole area.
Combined on the whole area. So, if we were to create a pocket park on the easterly lid, maybe just ten people there, because you're talking about twenty over the entire span?
So, I should have included some photos that I have of the east tank, the original one, where there's a planter, and you can see cracks emanating from it. And there's photos from inside the tank looking up, and the cracks emanate all the way through. The other tank has roughly three and a half inches of concrete with no rebar. I don't believe there's rebar in three and a half inches of concrete, and no support underneath it for the span that it has. I personally think this is a risk to the city every day we leave it like it is.
And is that three and a half inches throughout the lid, or are you just quoting the skinniest portion?
We drilled, core drilled in several locations and measured around the outside of it. It averages three and a half to four inches.
And has, as, you know, with this seventy-eight thousand dollar, you know, bill that we're looking at for engineering for what's to be estimated about a hundred and thirty thousand dollar project, through the seventy-eight thousand dollars of engineering, the, they've basically only given us one option?
I want to go back and separate out something that seems to be a misconception. We quite often compare the, and it doesn't really help a lot, but it helps a little. A lot of times, we compare the total construction cost and say a percentage of that is what engineering should be. So, a lot of times, on a simple project, that might be fifteen percent, right? Twelve to fifteen percent. On a project like this, it gets really difficult to do that, because they have to not only analyze what would be a new lid, which is the only part that's really being constructed, but they also have to analyze an existing structure that they know very little about. They have to go out and measure it, look at it, make some assumptions based on the age of it. And that is also part of their design, but it isn't part of the construction. The other part, I want to make sure I draw to your attention, is the first time they came out, the sixteen thousand, close to seventeen, was an evaluation. That wasn't the design. So, take that, set it aside. The construction services, that's not saying we're going to spend it. That's having it there in case we have problems come up during construction, so we can solve them. So, what you're left with is about forty-seven thousand in the middle, of which probably a third or better is because we've asked them to do more work.
And through that additional work and additional investigation, however, it sounds as though we're still affixed on the same fix, and that there's only one fix. And I'm just concerned that as long as we've been working on this, we've, you know, worked with this engineering firm, they've only come up with one idea, it seems like, for the fix.
It could be that it's the right idea.
Okay, I'm going to comment, you know, I, you know, I have a tough time chewing this. I mean, I have to kind of say, stop the madness. I mean, it just seems as though, and I realize we're fifty thousand dollars into this, but this all started out with, you know, locating a sculpture that, on some tanks that were built eighty years ago, which I think would be pretty obvious that they're not going to meet today's standards. I really don't know, quite honestly, what the solution is. I quite honestly would be looking towards the, you know, the engineering folks and staff to come up with solutions for this. And it sounds to me like it's a take it or leave it situation, which just seems as though as long as we've been working on this, that maybe we've become focused on that, that one avenue. So, that's my concern. You know, if we're going to spend the money on the fix, are we spending money that really needs to be needed or spent? Or are we spending money on a fix just because it's the only option that somebody's thought about? So, I'm very concerned with that, the amount of money that we're spending on engineering to, in the end, be given this, this one option. So, that's my concern.
So, I'm looking at this from a number of different viewpoints, and I'm trying to take in everything that everyone's said so far. And one of the responsibilities I feel that we have is to rein in costs, to be fiscally responsible. Responsible. I'm looking at the history of this and how it's escalated over the years. Like you said, like Counselor Wiener said, we are fifty-six thousand dollars into this already. But then I also heard that we've had some citizen input on this. There's been a vision, and there are safety concerns. So, I'm torn. I have come to the conclusion, however, that yes, I want to hear no more work. Because we, it seems like there's been a lot of additions, and I want to, I want to move forward with this. I want to see something approved and begun and completed without continuing to add. The escalation on these things is one of the reasons that I chose to run for council in the first place. Having said that, to go back and reevaluate and look for other options is only going to cost us more money. I want to stop the flow of money that has already been spent on this project, and I would like to see something happen, based on, safety first, also the vision that we have for the city that I've been hearing about, the fact that we have had citizen input on this, and people want to see this. But I want to rein in these costs. I want to stop the madness, is the term that I heard, and I wholeheartedly agree with that. We need to, I feel, I would like to commit to an action and then make sure that that action stays, pardon the pun, concrete. Thank you.
Counselor Servades.
Thank you. I'm glad Mr. Larson shared those comments, because that was one of the things I was thinking of. I don't know if we've ever given, as a council, any other instruction to the consultant or staff, other than to head down, I mean, we've probably asked for some options, but I think, Mr. Wiener, we've probably, since we made the decision three years ago to put the monument there, the general overall feeling was, okay, what do we need to do to make that happen? And along the way, there's been some options. So, I think this can be parsed into a couple of things, and not that I want to send you guys, I want to say thank you to the historical perspective. I know we put you guys in the hot seat. The historical perspective that you provided tonight is very much appreciated, just the overall history of what's gone on down there. The, you know, we could go look at, okay, let's just do nothing. Let's, it couldn't be do nothing. It'd probably be do nothing and pull the rail forward. What's that cost? And Joe and Bretton team could come up with a number. Let's, to each one of these, we could put a number. I think we, as a group, need to decide, and I agree, stop the madness, let's stop the flow. But at some point, we either say, we want to improve this area, this is a general concept to me. This needs to be pocket park with the improvements for safety and stability that need to be made, and then there's the monument. Or we really bare bones it and do nothing. There's not a lot of in-between, I guess. There's a, why do we improve the lids if we don't need to? We just pull the fence forward and call it yesterday. So, it's either we do nothing, except for the fence, or we make the investment with a pocket park and get it done quickly and as inexpensively as possible.
Okay, anyone else? Counselor Almberg.
Question for you, Mr. Stowell. How much has been actually spent to date on this design? They really don't have directions for going forward with the design. But what is the money that has been spent for the approved contracts?
I don't have the number right off the top of my head, but it is the sum of everything through Amendment Two. So, if we brought out, broke out a calculator, that's what we've spent to date. They're at a standstill until we ask them to do something else. And that would be by approving the amendment.
And you, but you don't, you don't know the total number. I guess we could add, you say through?
Yeah, I should have added a slight amount. I'm terribly sorry.
Sixteen thousand nine, nine hundred and nineteen, twenty-six, six thirty-two. And of course, we haven't done construction services. About forty-three in some change.
It's shy of fifty-six. Because that twelve, seven twenty-two in construction services was transferred over to design and bidding.
That is correct.
So, it's close to fifty-six thousand, or if it's shy.
Shot. Shot for what we have today. Well, I'm still going, it's out of scale. I know there's one other option that could be considered, and that's a structural slab on top of that other existing slab. Should be considered, should be explored.
Would you like me to respond to that?
Sure.
We did consider that when we were looking at replacing the lids. We did not ask the engineer to look at designing it.
What do you mean by, we looked at it, but we didn't ask the engineer to design?
As staff, we looked at it as an option, and we thought that having what would be a six to eight inch slab on top of there would create accessibility issues and an abruptness that wouldn't be pleasing.
Okay. I don't want to go through the design process, but earlier today, we also talked about if we did that, we could ramp into that so that accessibility is off the table. That's not a problem. And there's also a barrier potential, a railing system at the sidewalk, so that it doesn't become a tripping hazard right there, but it allows people to go up there. I mean, it's a simple solution, if structurally it works to have a reinforced concrete slab on top of that thing, because you already have at least one column in there. I didn't see if there were more than one column, but there's one beam going down through that thing about four or five feet from the sidewalk.
And if that's something council would like us to have the engineer look at, we'd have to amend our scope of work with BHC, and I'd come back with a different amendment.
So, then the, anyway, I'm really frustrated with this, because I think when we went out of the blocks, we didn't do our homework, and we just had a blank check basically for the engineer to run with it. And I'm not happy with this, not at all.
I appreciate that, but in all fairness, I believe that we did follow what we were asked to do. And this was handed to us as a project that wasn't of our doing.
Fair enough. Who asked you to do that? Not the council?
Well, the council did by placing the monument on top of the vaults, required the engineering team to look at it to make sure it wouldn't fall over.
Joe, let's go back one step on this conversation. We were asked, we were provided a certain amount of information to put the obelisk there. It's kind of like some other issues that we've been given information and have to go back and rediscover. This thing has grown because of that. This thing has grown because of that. This council didn't say, we would like to have that obelisk there without knowing where this obelisk was. I never heard about it until it was brought to us. So they say, we would like to go there without giving any background about the engineering or the potential cost of it. And that's part of our problem. We seem to be making decisions that grow. We're given a nice obelisk, it's the right thing to do, but sometimes, when you're given something to do the right thing, we don't know what the consequences for the costs are. That's my concern. And I really feel that this engineering firm, for whatever reason, is chewing on a pretty fat piece of roast beef with the staff. I really think that, that they're taking advantage of this city on this little project. And you can compare it to the Davido contract over here, which is a much more complicated project. That's all I have to say.
Mayor Poltev.
Thank you.
I don't want to beat this to death, which we have more than once, but it does bother me when we have three inches of concrete with no rebar in it. That's not safe. There's a point where we don't know when it is. Tonight, tomorrow, could be three years from now it collapses. I think for safety and for the vision that we've gotten in a lot of different committees about having the walkway, I would like to move to authorize the mayor to sign a contract number four, the professional services agreement between the City of Oak Harbor and H, I mean, BHC consultants, the amount of twenty-one thousand, three hundred and thirty-six dollars, increasing the total amount contract from fifty-six thousand, seven hundred and seventy-three dollars to seventy-eight thousand, one hundred and nine dollars.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second, and it's the exact recommended action that's in your packets. So I'm not gonna read it back unless somebody wants me to. Any other discussion? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
So it is four to two. The fours have. Okay. So we will move on to item number nine A.
Mayor, how much time? We got two more. How much time do we need, do you think?
Well, that's a good question.
Yeah, we got nine minutes.
Nine thirty?
Nine thirty. I'd say more than that, probably. Just try nine forty-five.
Always talk fast.
Okay.
Can I move first, or?
Well, obviously, yeah.
Sure.
Mayor, I move to suspend our rules and extend the meeting time to nine forty-five.
Second.
Yeah, the motion, the second to extend the rules and, and increase the time to nine forty-five. Extend the time to nine forty-five. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we're gonna take a short break, and we'll reconvene here in five minutes.
Appreciate it.
I'd like to welcome those still with us here, and those viewing back. We've had a recess, five-minute recess. We have extended our, our meeting time tonight. This is the May first regular Oak Harbor City Council meeting, and we have extended that until nine forty-five, and we've got two business items yet to, to take care of. And we are on to the item number nine A, which is intent to commence annexation proceedings, wood property. And we have our senior planner, Kat, come back with us.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Here to make a short presentation on a annexation request. And we discussed this at the workshop, at the April workshop meeting. So I have a few slides here, and I'll go through them to summarize the options and things related to the action. So this is an annexation request for a couple properties on Southwest Twenty-Fourth. It's in the UGA, and it's just west of what is kind of now being referred to as the Gary Oaks subdivision, which is a project that's in review. It hasn't been approved yet, but it's going through a preliminary plat review process. The land use designation for this is low-density residential. I'll talk about, a little bit about what it means for the annexation. And it's not in the city, so it doesn't have a city zoning classification yet. So what is needed tonight of city council is just, or the choices that the city council has tonight for any annexation is whether, yes, you want to accept this area into the city. The decision is totally at your discretion. There are no criteria. There are no requirements to do this. This is a complete choice for the city council. But if you do choose to accept this area, then you have some choices within that. You can choose to bring it in as proposed. You have the choice to also geographically modify the area. The council has done that in the past annexations, where it doesn't make sense to bring in a small section. Maybe better to square off the boundaries in some areas. So you have an option to do that. The state law also says, well, when you do the annexation, you want to decide whether you want to adopt the zoning designation along with it, and whether you want the property to share in the city's indebtedness. If you decide that this is not an annexation that the city should undertake, you can decide against it. And like I said, this is totally a choice. There's really no right of appeal in terms of the decision. So in accepting the annexation, in general, what are some of the issues related to it? So with any annexation of properties within the city, you do have demands in service. And I've noted in the report, some of the comments from our fire department. It does demand service and fire and police and all our utilities, basically. So every annexation does impact that in a very incremental basis. If you ask, like I said, as I mentioned in the workshop, if you ask our fire chief today, he will say that we have crossed that line where the demands of services have been placed on the fire department a long time ago. And so every annexation after here is continuing to increase the burden for, for their service and the ability to, to render that within the established level of service that the council has set. Other impacts, as this area grows, as city grows and annexes property in, you're gonna have transportation impacts. All development generate trips. These trips will be distributed towards the, throughout the city street network. But as you know, Highway Twenty is one of the major arteries that flows through the city. All these intersections at some point lead to Highway Twenty, and there's a potential with this development and westward development, there will be some impacts in the future on Highway Twenty and the street intersections along with it. What are some of the property-specific issues with this? Timing, timing, if, if this property's annexed into the city, the timing of the development of this, these properties could potentially have some impacts. So this land slopes to the south, therefore, it's natural to design systems for stormwater and sanitary sewer to flow towards the south. The, therefore, this development will be dependent on the adjacent property developing. So if the timing is worked out correctly, we'll have the property in the city, the Gary Oaks subdivision develop, and they'll build the infrastructure for that. And when this property develops, it'll connect to that infrastructure, and everything will work fine. For some reason, if we have development proposals in the opposite time in the sense, if this property moves ahead for development, ahead of some of the infrastructure being built, then it, it could have challenges in terms of moving this project forward. So I've noted some of the challenges in the report in terms of sewer connections. They'd have to get the sewer back up to Twenty-Fourth, which means a forced main or some other private system to get it up there. And then when the gravity system comes in place, they'll have to abandon that system. All of these add some kind of cost to the development, and so not necessarily desirable. But the timing of this is something that we can't control, and so we hope that the property owners can manage that in terms of what it's gonna cost to them. The Ridgeway Drive kind of abuts right into this property, so that street will have to be extended through these two lots as they develop. And we also have, through an annexation agreement, at least for the property to the east, which is the Gary Oaks subdivision, to build a trail system to connect eventually that leads into Fort Nugent Park. And so they will, they will have to incorporate trail systems into their development. And some of these trails may cross into this property, so they'll have to deal with those trails and make the connections as well to this. So these are just some of the, the, I don't want to call them issues, but some of the highlights of the annexation from a general standpoint and from a property-specific standpoint. Adopting zoning. So this is, just to give you a history on zoning at annexation. So before the 2016 update to a comprehensive plan, we had a land use map and a zoning map that was on a one-to-one ratio. We had seventeen land use categories. We had seventeen zoning categories. When a property came from the county into the city, the land use just transferred on a one-to-one ratio. So a low-density residential transferred to an R1 zoning, and we had a medium density and it transferred to R2. And so there was no question on what land use transitioned to what zoning category. With the 2016 update, we changed the land use map. One of the reasons we changed that is because we were getting a lot of requests for land use changes, and land use changes had to go through comp plan amendments, which takes a year-long process. And depending on the timing of when you decide to do that land use change, you can actually, it can actually be two years, because you've missed the window to file the application. So it was taking a long time to accommodate change in the community with the, with the system that we had from a one-to-one ratio. So we went to a generalized land use map, where we reduced the land use categories to about seven or eight, where we kept all the zoning categories the same. Now, the way that works is one land use category is implemented by more than one zoning category. So for example, the low-intensity residential land use category is implemented by R1, R2, and R3 zoning categories. And we have that same kind of thing for commercial and, and other, where we have multiple zoning categories implementing land use. So what this kind of offers is, when properties come into the city, they have a choice of what zoning category they can choose. So that's a flexibility as well. Well, what are the drawbacks of that? The drawbacks are the intensity of development in certain areas and the impacts that they can have on the utility system. So transportation, so we'll have to, so when we update our plans from here on out, we'll have to take into account this, this flexibility in zoning and be able to make sure that our system has the capacity to handle this change in zoning designation. And we'll have to do that with all the plans that we update from here on out. So, so with the zoning of the property coming, the annexation of this property, the applicant can choose between R1, R2, and R3, because this property is on low den, or designated low-density residential land use. So there's options here in terms of zoning for the property owner, and the city has recommendations on that, and I'll go over that in a little bit. Endettedness, this refers to the existing and future bonds that the city has, to just to share in the city taxpayer, share, which is shared by the city taxpayers. So any property that you bring into the city, you want them to share in all the future bonds as well. So this is something that you make a conscious choice on doing. So what do you need to do today? Today is just a meeting with the applicant. The applicant is here, and therefore, you can have a chance to give him some time to tell the city about what his ideas are for the annexation. I can ask questions and figure out things. Don't need to decide what the zoning is tonight. All you need to do tonight is to make a decision on moving this forward. When the annexation does come forward- When the annexation does come forward for the actual adopt, bringing in the property, at that time you can decide the zoning, which in this area, we think, even though a low-density land use designation allows for R1, R2, and R3, there is some logic in how these zoning classifications are arranged within these land uses. So you don't want to have R3 right next to an R1, just because of the impacts that they would have on each other. But you can have transitions. You can have R1 surrounded by R2 and then transition to an R3. So you have flexibility in the zoning. And what we would recommend is to choose between R1 and R2. And that's, that's a choice that the applicant can have in, when they do annex into the city. R2 provides for options to go with single-family homes if they wanted to, that density accommodates that. It also does accommodate duplexes. When you get into the R3 zoning category, the R3 zoning category doesn't support single-family. You have to go into the apartment style. And so that's a slightly higher impact, and that's why I talked about the transition. It's good to go from R1, R2, and transition those R3 uses. So for this location, we think R1 or R2 would, would work, but that the applicant can decide at the time or when we come in for the actual annexation. So we recommend that the council meet with the applicant as required by state law, find out information about this annexation, and make a decision to further this process forward. The next step for the applicant will be to actually get a petition signed. And then there is a, state law has prescribed set of processes that we have to go through in terms of notification and checking with the county and so on. And then it'll come back here for the actual annexation action. So any questions that I can answer with?
Yes.
I have a couple, thank you, Mayor. Quick question about the acreage on this lot before we move on. Is, is this a two-acre lot?
Counselor, I should ask for public comment. I forgot to do that first.
We'll come back.
I'm very sorry. Any, any questions from the public at this point? Okay, thanks. Sorry about that.
Sorry for jumping the gun there. So I wasn't at the last meeting, but I watched it. And if I remember correctly, is this approximately two acres?
It's about 4.6 acres. From the Assessors Office database, we got it.
So that was about two acres each.
Each, two, yeah.
And just another point of clarification, when we're looking at the future issues with this, R2 zoning, that if I'm correct, is between three and 12 units per acre?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Other, Councilor Servadius?
Thank you, Mayor. Are you Mr. Wood?
Yeah.
Thank you. I apologize. We probably ought to do a better job of getting, anyone that shows up out of here early and we can sit here till midnight. So I appreciate you bearing with us.
That was the odd face in the audience.
Is there a, and this is a cat question, is there, the petition that would normally be required for 60% of the appraised value, if the owner has 100% of what's being considered, isn't that a fairly straightforward process?
Yes.
Okay. Is the, I don't see any recommendations to possibly consider those lots to the left. Was there thought given to that? Are those not two-and-a-half-ish acre parcels? There's, it looks like there'd be, if we went directly to the west of Mr. Wood's property, it kind of squares it off nicely.
We did have some consideration on that, but I think from a development standpoint in this area, I think it's better to have a property-driven annexation, property owner-driven annexation here, just because of the timing of development and their plans for it. Just as an example, the, some of the properties to the west, I think, are in the county and they are designated as forest for tax purposes. And to get that tax break if you designate it as a forest, now that's a property owner choice. And I think it's better served for the city if that property owner decides that they want to have the property developed and therefore annexed into the city, as opposed to the city prematurely trying to get them into the city. It doesn't serve any purpose for us to have that property in the city and not be developable.
Thank you. And my last comment, Mr. Wood, do you, are you, do you live here in the area?
Mount Vernon.
Okay. After spending the morning going through the woods with our police department, if, and in general, I do support this, I would always support a property right, owner's property rights to come into the city, we need to be proactive. If you have issues out there, let us help you, especially, how do I say this? We don't want to inherit more woods. Let's let the county take care of their woods, and our woods will keep its nice park somewhere.
I'll be glad to get rid of the wood for you.
That's all I have, thank you.
Yeah, one thing, just kind of a side note, I know you were talking about that earlier today, and noticed my jeans are a little dirty here. I went out and walked on the property today, and there are a few very, very, very small issues. In fact, they might not even be on our property, but there's like a couple of bicycles out there that are torn up and there's a few, it's like a tent. Yeah, I mean, I saw a couple of things. It's nothing where it's a real, a camp or anything like that, but I just did want to make you aware of it because it is kind of a no-man's zone.
Sure, thank you.
Yes, Mayor Broton.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Wood, do you have any set designs or you just want to bring it into annexation and then see how things develop at this point?
Yeah, we've, we've got a couple of different options, but yeah, basically that's what we're doing. We want to bring it into the city and then we want to look at our options from that point.
All right, thank you.
Yes, Counselor Larson.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Wood, part of our process includes in our urban growth area element goals policies, we have a number of things. It's on, I'm looking at page 203 of our packet, that we have to ensure prior to annexation. And one of them is specifically about you, so I'd just like to ask you a question to ensure that I'm okay with this. And it says, ensure the, ensure the property owners within an annexing area are aware of foreseeable obligations or requirements that may be imposed upon them by the city at the time of annexation. Are you aware of those?
Are you referring to property tax?
Yeah, property taxes and, and, you know, laws, regulations, ordinances, which will now apply to your land that, okay.
Correct.
So I just wanted to make sure that you're aware of that.
No, I understand that.
Thank you.
Anyone else? So I'm a little confused. Is this the, this, we're conducting the meeting with Mr. Wood right now, the first part of your recommended action, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, okay, good. Anyone else got, yes, Counselor Hyson?
Just a quick, quick comment regarding the comment from the fire department about how annexing, continuing to add property in the southwest quadrant of town adds additional burden to them. Obviously, the mere act of annexing vacant land isn't a real issue, but, you know, every time we do this, with the potential of developing said land, has the potential of burdening the department with work that they may or may not be physically capable of doing. So I just want us all to have in the back of our minds that when we do this, we are obligating ourselves to plan for the future, because I don't want us to keep adding land in the southwest quadrant and then turn around and say, oh, well, we can't afford to build a fire station or add new firefighters, et cetera, et cetera, because that would be irresponsible on our part.
May I address that?
Did you, did you want?
If you want to. I don't have anything wrong with that.
No, I was just, basically, I understand what you're saying, and this property, we actually could have brought it in with the whole annexation that went on before. I'm sorry, I forget the developer's name, that owns all the property around us. Would you say the name of that?
Land and Gentry, oh, no, they're across the street.
No, Steve Waldron, I think.
Yeah, Waldron, right. And so anyway, our property is a peninsula. So we are, we are cut out on three sides by the city. And on the other side is, is the forested area that you're referring to. So it actually is, and it does pretty much level off the line for the city. So it does, does make a straight line and like I said, we are a peninsula. And I do understand there'll be more, but his subdivision's a lot bigger than ours will be.
Counselor Servadius.
Thank you, Mr. Kamak. The, if you pull up the drawing, the map, you mentioned that Ridgway possibly extends through to the south. Correct?
Yes. So.
This may not be completely.
That's Ridgway right there, and it'll have to extend through the property.
And so this may not be completely germane, but I'm curious, how do we, from a planning perspective, how do we shift that burden, if that's the right term, or that responsibility to that property owner or any other, is that just part of our overall, how do we plan?
Yeah.
So if we have to run a street through there now and have easements, and all of a sudden they lose a section of their land that can be developed, they know that going into this.
They have to, so this property owner has currently got a preliminary plan in for review with the city.
Okay.
And as part of that review, we require them to extend Eagle Vista Drive and to make sure that there are street connections lined up here for the Ridgway connection. So we take into account those alignments. So we also, I think, if I'm remembering the plan right, we'll have Ridgway abut the property to the south as well.
Okay. And so Gary Oaks runs all the way underneath Mr. Wood's property, that runs all the way over at the moment, that application?
Yes, I think their property runs all the way to the city limits.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, other? Yes, Counselor Servadius.
If you would, just to save my tongue, please. I move to accept the recommended action as presented on the screen, which matches our packet.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second motion by Counselor Servadius. I'll give the second to Counselor Wiener to accept the area, et cetera, as the recommended action. Any other input or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. We are on to our last item for the evening, which is item number 10A, utility rate study, presented by HDR Engineering, Inc. And we have Mr. Corn with us tonight, I believe.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So I have a brief update for you. As we've been working through the wastewater projections, we have also been looking at the water, solid waste, and stormwater rate projections. So this is essentially an update and information for you all to, to bring to you to consider as you move forward with this, as we, as you look at budgeting in the future. So I'll start off with a quick purpose of this. We wanted to take a quick look at the overall status of the water, solid waste, and stormwater utilities, based on the updates we developed back in 2009, 2010, and a few other updates since then, as, as you've been moving forward with budgets, capital projects and other improvements on the system. And basically, we wanted to make sure that there was not a need for additional rate adjustments in the near term and what those, the financial health of those utilities look like going forward. So we base this on the same approach that we did in the prior studies. We have our generally accepted approaches, as outlined by the American Water Works Association and the Water Environment Federation. And really, in the past studies, what we do is a comprehensive review. So that includes a revenue requirement, essentially the financial plan for each of those utilities, what are the needs to fund the operating and capital programs. Then we allocate those costs to the customer classes of service. So in the prior comprehensive rate study, that's where we looked at what the, each class's contribution to that revenue need should be. And there were some changes in that prior rate study based on how different customer classes, and I'm talking about residential, multifamily, commercial, how those customer classes utilize and benefit from the services you provide. Based on that information, then, we made some rate structure changes, or how we charge the customers, and also adjusted the level. So for this update, we're really focused on the top box, the revenue requirement. We wanted to simply take a look at the financial health of each of the utilities. I also do have in here rates based on those rate adjustments that, that could be needed in the future. They're again informational for you all to consider, but could be implemented in the future if necessary. So on the revenue requirement side of things, really what it is, is taking a look at the comparison of revenues versus expenses, again, both operating and capital needs. This is looked at over a five-to-10-year period. And we also want to make sure there's other financial metrics met. These are items like maintaining adequate ending fund reserves, so cash reserves in the bank for unexpected items for, based on generally accepted approaches, and I'll talk about that a little bit. We also want to make sure that you're adequately funding capital, specifically renewal and replacement. So this is the maintenance and the upkeep of the existing system that's in place today, and that's a key component. When I work with utilities, I walk in the door, I can look at a few things and I can, I'll know right away if they're actually funding their capital at an adequate level. And that's based on available reserves, their debt service coverage ratio, if they have outstanding debt, and how they're funding their capital plan. If utilities are continually issuing debt for renewal and replacement, we're not in the right spot, and we need to look at that. So in the prior studies, you are at a good level. We bumped that up over time, and we've continued that through this process to make sure that you're adequately maintaining that existing infrastructure in place today. We also want to make sure that we analyze each of these utilities on a standalone basis. Essentially, we want to make sure that the revenues support the expenses. That's the definition of an enterprise fund. That's what each of these are, and we don't want to subsidize those with other funding from other, other city funds to support those. We want to look at what the impact to rates is to provide that service. And we use what's known as the cash basis in rate speaking. It's not the same for accountants out there. On the cash basis, it's essentially looking at each year on a standalone basis, and do the revenue support the expenses in each year that we're looking at. So once we have that component, we can design rates based on that. And ultimately, our goal here for establishing rates is that they're cost-based and equitable, so each customer class is paying their fair share, and that we can defend them if someone were to ask, why are you charging us the way you are? What is, why are you charging us this rate versus that rate as we go forward? So some key assumptions of this update, we took a look and started with the 2008 budgets. We projected over a five-year period to take that long-term view as part of that. The model we've developed over the years actually goes out 10, but we focus on that near-term increment as part of that. We calculate revenues based on the current rates and current customer characteristics. So I don't just take the budget number and say, we get this much revenue. We actually take a look at how many customers there are. So for water, what size meter are they? What is the rate, the number, and calculate that, how much water is sold at each tier for each of the classes, and we actually calculate those revenues. And the check is, how close are we to that actual revenue number that you receive? If we're off, maybe there's some billing adjustments that were made that we didn't catch, but that's the overall goal, to have that independent review of what those revenues should be. We escalated O&amp;M expenses based on inflationary factors, so we've got some history on what your O&amp;M is increasing by, so we've continued that forward. And we developed a capital funding plan based on the current capital plans for each of the utilities as part of that. So for the water utility, here's a summary, graphical summary, of the revenue requirement. So each of the bars is a year, starting with 2018 out through 2023. The bars are the expenses. So we have our O&amp;M expenses as the first part of the bar, the blue color. Then we get into that darker color, which is taxes and transfers. Rate-funded capital, that's that renewal and replacement component, as well as any debt service or to-or-from reserves. That's a transfer to or from the reserve funds to either fund costs in a current year or to put money towards reserve to maintain reserve balances. The horizontal dash bar, that is the current rate level, and the increase or the reason it's tipped up is just based on a minimal assumption of growth on the system. So new customers connecting to the system, revenues are going to come up each year. So as you can see, as we go out through 2018 and 19, we, our, our revenue line is above our expenditure bar. As we get into 2020 and out, our revenues are below our expenditure bar. So it does look like, based on historical inflation, capital funding needs, that future rate adjustments may be necessary to fund the water utility. Based on that plan, you can see, starting in 2021, it would be about 3.5% a year rate adjustment. And the bottom part of this slide shows the water ending reserve fund balances. So that is the cash on hand. So the blue or the bottom part of that area chart is the operating fund, and the upper part is your SDC fund or your connection fund. You can see, even with the 3.5% adjustment in each year, reserves are still trending down. That's primarily the result of funding capital improvements over this five-year period. So we're using reserves to pay for some of those capital improvements. In a So we're using reserves to pay for some of those capital improvements, in addition to the rate-funded capital component. So those are the, the primary drivers of the decline in reserves. We're still maintaining adequate ending reserve levels, so we're meeting our minimum targets for our ending reserve fund, but we are starting to trend down. You can see in the last year, it kind of levels out. That's one of the key pieces that I look at, as we're developing a plan in this manner, where we're burning reserves to fund projects. If that line tips too far down, it's hard to turn the ship around and get it back up. And all of a sudden, you're looking at greater rate adjustments in the future, to keep reserves at adequate level, to fund your capital improvement needs. So that's the purpose of leveling that out. So overall, water in general, looks pretty reasonable. Looks like, I'll call it roughly inflationary, maybe a little higher than inflationary increases coming up here, starting out in 2021, 2023, two and 23, based on our projections. On the rate design, this is really more for informational purposes. We maintain the current rate structure. We're not proposing any change to how you charge your customers. It would just be in the level of the rates that you would charge your customer. There's a fixed charge for all customers, based on their meter size, and then the multifamily class is charged on a per living unit basis, and that's something we developed in that last study, to look at what the cost per living unit would be for those.
Can you go into a little more depth on that? So it's not, let's see, I know we have some examples where there's an apartment with a meter.
Mm-hmm.
How are we breaking that down?
I'll get that, let me hit that on the next slide. I've got a good example of that. Then there's the variable, or the consumption charge. So most customers have a three-tier, residential, multifamily, have a three-tier structure with three different tiers. So the more you use, the more you pay. We've established that, based on average consumption at different levels, as well as the commercial, your commercial, church, school, hotel, motel, they have a separate tier size, that I'll show you on the next slide, and then irrigation with a two-tier. So the way this works is that on the top half is your fixed charge. So everybody pays a fixed charge, based on their meter size. The larger the meter, the higher the rate. That's based on the meter equivalency, or the capacity and demands that they can place on the system at any point in time. It's called an equivalent meter ratio, and we take that five-eighths and, or three-quarters, and we increase that, based on the amount of capacity of each meter. In addition to that meter charge for multifamily, then they also pay a per-unit rate for each of those living units. And so you can see that's slightly less than a five-eighths or three-quarter inch meter charge down underneath at the bottom here. I think this is, there we go, so right across there. So that's that per-living unit charge for those multifamilies. So if they have 10 living units, they would pay 10 times that fixed charge there. Did that, that answer the question?
Yes.
In addition to the fixed charge, there's the consumption charge. For single-family, we have blocks zero to three CCF. CCF is 100 cubic feet. One cubic foot equals 748 gallons. So for the first three CCF, they pay a rate of 285. The next three, it goes to 430 currently, and then above six, 675. So that was based on the cost of service analysis we did several years ago. And then, commercial, it's zero to 10, 10 to 20, and over 20, irrigation, zero to 10, and everything above 10. So no changes in the rates, until we get out here to the three and a half, and that would just be across the board, where all components are increased equally by three and a half percent, if the council implemented that plan right there. On the storm drain side, very similar chart, very similar expenses. We have our O&amp;M, we have taxes, we have rate-funded capital, we have debt service, we have reserve funding. The good news on the stormwater side, as you can see, that revenue line is above the expense line in each year. So no proposed changes to the storm drain rate at this time, as you're recovering all of your costs over this projected time period. And in reality, you can see the reserve fund balances here on this slide. You can see that we actually are able to put a little bit of money into our reserves over time. When we first did the storm drain study, back in 2008, '09 timeframe, we had no money in storm drains. So we've been able to build up some reserves, we've been able to fund capital improvements on an annual basis, and maintain a fairly healthy reserve fund in the storm drain utility. Right now, the current rate structure is $14.22 per EDU, or equivalent dwelling unit. That's based on a set amount of impervious area. So each residential home pays $14.22. All other non-residential homes pay a per EDU rate. So there's a calculation of how much impervious area they have, and they could equal one EDU, or they could be multiple EDUs, based on the amount of impervious area that they have. So pervious area, basically, water hits it, it runs off it. It's not just green grass, it's the concrete, the hardscapes, all of those components that that is based on. On the solid waste rate study, same, same chart here, we have, we don't have the capital component necessarily on the, on the solid waste side. The capital component of carts and bin replacements, vehicles, those are included in the operating budget, so it's included in that first part of that bar, the blue bottom side that there, where it's the majority of that bar. But you can see, as we go out over time, our revenues are below our overall expenses. Just as a point of reference, the last time the city adjusted solid waste rates was back in 2007. So the last several updates that I've been involved in, we have not had to adjust solid waste rates. Revenues have kept pace with expenses, but as we're looking at this next five-year, it looks like expenses are starting to outpace our revenues at current levels. So those have been the rates in place since 2007. There we go. To fund the solid waste efficiency, it's about two and a half to three percent a year. That would be starting in 2019. Again, similar to water, even with those adjustments, we have somewhat of a declining reserve balance, but we do have sufficient reserves in the solid waste utility, so we're still maintaining those minimum targets for the solid waste utility. So we're not dipping down below where we should be, from a prudent standing, from prudent levels, we're maintaining that over this five-year period. Rate design, there's a rental charge, there's a pickup charge. On this slide, you can see the top half above the dash line, those are typically your residential customers. You've got your different can sizes, 20 gallon, 35, 65, or 95 gallon cans. You can see, based on the current rates of, I think it's $19.90 for a 35 gallon can, that's the typical can size for your residential customers. You can see that would increase to $22.73, so almost a $3 increase over that five-year period, if you adopted a rate plan, such as the one I put together here, with two and a halves and three percent annual adjustments, to fund the solid waste utility. The one-yard, two-yard, three-yard, four-yard, and six-yard, those are your bigger trash containers, that most of your non-residential customers have. You can see that rate there also increases. And in addition to that rental charge, the top half, then you also have weekly pickup charges. And so if you get picked up one time a week, or five times a week, then you incur additional costs for those pickups as part of that. And so we've adjusted all of these rates, based on that rate transition plan, just to show what that could look like going forward. Wastewater, you've all been talking about this a lot lately. Nothing's changed, I don't believe, from what was presented to you a couple weeks ago, as part of that. This is the graphical representation of that revenue requirement. The big change here, as you go out over time, is that purple bar, that is the annual debt service payment. So as that new debt comes on from the additional SRF loans, then that pops up, and you can see the revenue line is below the overall revenue, O&amp;M expenses. The other thing I'll note is, on the bottom half, you'll see some orange bars down below, that is the use of reserves. We're actually pulling money out of reserves to fund costs, either O&amp;M or capital, with the, the rate plan that we have in place. So right now, you have implemented a rate last, this January, there was another 15% adjustment in 2019. As part of my rate plan, I plugged in additional four and a halves each year, but you can see here, your reserve funds are getting down to extremely minimal levels over this time period. Part of that's drawing down to fund capital cost, part of that's that orange bar on the prior slide, to fund O&amp;M or capital as part of that. And so we're burning reserves down to a pretty minimal level for the sewer utility, even with the adopted 15% and the four and a half percents that I plugged in there annually. So what that looks like, on the rate structure side, we have a fixed charge, flat rate, for all customers. Again, multifamily is that per-unit charge as part of that. And then, commercial or non-residential are also charged a consumption charge. And so here's the rates that are in place right now in 2019, and then those would be those four and a halves going out over time, for your residential customer. For your multifamily, we have the fixed charge, and then the per-unit charge. And then for all the remaining customers here, you can see all the rates are essentially the same. They also pay that consumption charge on all water use, based on that consumption that would be charged then. So at this point, this was mostly to provide information to you all, on what we're seeing with the rate analyses. We're putting together kind of finalized documents for staff to look at, as well as doing some additional tasks, which are part of our original scope, as we're working through this. And you have rates set for January 2019 for sewer. If you wanted to, as you go forward, the only utility we're, we're looking at that would need some adjustment, would be the solid waste utility, starting in 2019. The other utilities, solid, stormwater, doesn't need any adjustments. Water, we're looking at about 2021, for some possible adjustments, based on the projections we have now. With that, I'll take any questions that you all may have.
Nothing from the audience, I assume? Okay. Yes, Mayor Proten.
Thank you. Mr. Corn, could you send that presentation to us, so we can just keep a record of it to refer back digitally? Thank you.
Yep.
Yes, Councilor Amber.
Thank you. Mr. Corn, on each of the utilities, on the revenue side of your charts here, under customer growth, you have half a percent going out five years. Can you explain that? Half percent, half percent customer growth per year?
Correct. So that was based on our estimates that we've been using throughout the rate study updates. So basically, it says that we incur half a percent growth on our customer base. So if you give me a second here, I will look at my analysis. So on the water side, we would have, as an example, total residential customers, I'm going to make this easy math, hopefully for myself, as I look at this. We have total, we have 4,000 residential customers, as an example. And then, if we take half a percent growth on that, that would be the number of new customers. So we've increased the revenue, based on what that average customer comes on and pays the fixed charge and the consumption charge.
Okay, so this is stacked on to what is already the growth?
Yes.
Average growth?
Correct, yes.
Because you did that for all of the utilities?
Correct.
And then the miscellaneous revenues, they, they go up 1% per year. What's the connection with that and the growth?
That was based on what we've seen historically, when we were looking at the revenues, that the rev, that those miscellaneous revenues just continued to grow over time, and so that's what we pegged that growth on those miscellaneous revenues at. There was no magic number, it was what we've seen historically.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, Councilor Wiener.
Mr. Corn, on the sewer rate study, you know, we've been being told all along, as this cost is overrun, this $27 million, that it's not requiring a rate adjustment, but it appears as though, without a rate adjustment, that the current rates that we've established out to 2021 would not be sustainable, that we're going to, in order to sustain those rates, we're going to have to dip into our reserves, and there's going to be a certain point in time, where we're either going to have to catch up with an additional rate increase, or we're going to run out of reserves. Am I reading that right?
That is correct, and the use of reserves has always been in the plan. We've always had this bottom orange part of this chart, where we knew we would be using reserves, as we got rates up to levels over time. And so this reflects the latest cost projections, and then the escalation of O&amp;M over time as well. And so that's what drives the deficiencies out here, primarily, is that uptick in debt, and then additional O&amp;M, just inflationary impacts on O&amp;M costs.
So we'd planned on dipping into the reserves all along, but, but I'm assuming we hadn't planned to dip into them as deeply as we're talking about, or for the length of time we're talking about, because otherwise, again, it's not sustainable.
Correct.
So, so the $27 million in cost overruns has had an impact upon the rates, as we'd had them planned out, and in fact, the rates are going to need to be adjusted to compensate for that, in order to be able to maintain a sustainable budget.
To some extent, yes. The, the one good thing?
Could I hold for just a moment, I guess? We need to extend our time again.
Oh, sorry.
Move to extend the meeting time to 10 o'clock.
Motion second, to extend the meeting time to 10 o'clock. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Sorry about that.
So as, one of the things I was going to say is, as we look at the debt load, the SRF funding has somewhat balanced that out. Originally, we did not assume the full amount of SRF funding that you're able to, to achieve as part of this. We actually had revenue bonds, which were much more costly in these out-years to fund the project. So there is a little bit of a balancing out, in the funding approach you've been able to achieve as part of this.
Okay, and one final question. When, when did you complete the, the study? When was that shared with staff?
This? Just recently, I can't remember when you had your meeting, it was right before?
It was right before the workshop, where they talked through the GMP 13. We had them do a check-in, we updated that amount, so that when they talked about the GMP 13, we could also talk about what that impact could be on rates.
Okay, which I, which, correct me if I'm wrong, was, was relayed to us, that it was having no effect upon rates?
Well, if, from the presentation, as I recall, and Kathy might be able to speak to it better, the initial estimation on rates was close to $135 versus the $122 for 2023. So what the conversation was, is that it did have an impact on rates, but it didn't raise it to the level that was initially assumed, when the, when this project was brought forward. Now, I might not be speaking to it correctly, is there more to that?
And part of that difference, why Kathy's walking out, part of that difference was the municipal revenue bond assumption that we had. We had a final, I'll call it a cleanup revenue bond, which would have been at four to six percent interest, versus the lower, much lower interest you received on your SRF.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, if you go back and look at the presentations that have been made over time, there, there is a graph in those presentations, where we do a rate check-in. And there's a line that goes up to 100 and, I believe, almost $135 a month, as we get into the outer years. And then, as we have gotten SRF funding, and we've done another check-in, that line has come in lower than that $135 a month. And so the last time we checked in, Joe showed you that graph, and had this, this information that Sean is talking about tonight, in that graph, and it showed that $122 versus the $135 in the outer years. So there was a time where rates were projected to be $135 a month, it has come down over time.
I, I guess my concern is that the, the rates have come down, but they've come down to a level that's not sustainable, long-term, for our budget, so in, in turn, we're going to have to, to raise them. So I don't know if they've really come down, have they, if we, if we have to take them back up, in order to sustain, have a sustainable budget, long-term?
Can I answer that?
Yeah.
So the goal of the wastewater rate piece that he's doing tonight, is a check-in. The numbers that we have for the construction may come in lower. So what the plan has been all along, from what my understanding was, is we were going to use fund balance to, to continue keeping the rates lower. The fund balance was increased significantly for, to help pay for the treatment plan. The GMP 13 came in higher than what we expected, so we use, are using more of our fund balance than we anticipated, proposed use. We don't know yet exactly what that's going to look like. So before we say- So before we say that, yes, they're going to be that high, we don't know. So we have a rate increase plan for 12/20 of 2018. It's going to take us up to $102 a month. That's already been approved by council. That, with that in there, we're okay to get through the finishing of the construction before we do a final check-in with Sean and come up with what we truly know the rates will be for sure.
So if I can add to that, so the plan has been, do these check-ins periodically as we get a better handle on the costs. Then once construction is complete and we know the final costs, we'll have Sean do a rate analysis for, and present something for council for adoption for the next three years. That will give us three years of true operating costs. Because right now, we don't, we're projecting what those operating costs are. They're just an estimate that's in this study that Sean has prepared. So the plan is, once we know final costs, we'll come forward with a three-year rate plan for council consideration. Once we have three years of true operation numbers under our belt, then we can come forward with another analysis to make that final determination.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Cervantes.
Thank you. And Ms. Rosen, just, I think, clarification, a little bit of history. When we started with the rate increase in 2012, it was the hope of acquiring 15 million reserves, correct? I don't know if we ever hit that number.
Yes.
But part of what we're seeing there, I think, in the orange, when we're spending reserves, that was an intentional
Yes.
acquisition, I just want to make that clear. It was an intentional acquisition of those reserves to launch some of this upfront. That can look a little skewed, but obviously, yes, the, anytime the number goes up, it's going to affect the rate somewhere. But I think that's, hopefully, I'll provide some clarity. Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mayor Proten.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Rosen, I, and Mr. Corn, I want to say thank you because way back when, and I was early on council, there was no rate study. We had no clue. And we established a base before we even started construction. So I think it's the vision and forethought of staff that we need to do this. Let's set a baseline and let's plan. And Ms. Councilwoman Cervantes says, right. We planned that reserves to make it easier because none of us wanted to say, oh, all of a sudden, you've got a 10% raise in your rate. Let's do it gradual over time, and we'll adjust as we get the check-in. So thank you very much for keeping up on this and really, really appreciate it between finance, public works, and our rate study person. Thank you.
Anyone else? Questions? Okay, seeing none. Thank you very much, Sean.
Thank you, appreciate it. Love being here, so thank you.
Thank you.
So, any other business?
I have a question.
Yes?
Just a real quick question. Do you have any information on the lovely quilt that's on the wall?
You know, I don't. But I bet somebody does here.
Anybody?
That's a darn good question. Event?
It's made out of marathon t-shirts. It's gorgeous. Nikki?
It's, that's a Nikki question, actually. I think that's just a quilt made by somebody, I think organized by Nikki.
Somebody?
Yeah.
That was created using the t-shirts from the marathon.
Love to find out who, it's stunning.
Pretty cool.
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Motion, a second, to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.